All right, well, perhaps I can begin with the open public meeting statement and then when guest on comes if it's later. Um, is Eric here? There he is. Okay, sorry, you're hitting in the middle. Okay. Here, I begin. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers indicating that this special meeting would take place on Wednesday, April 28th, 2021 at 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform. Due to COVID-19 virus and under executive orders by Governor Philip D. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This supplemental notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Bulletin Board and Milburn Town Front Hall. All front door supplemental notice was also forwarded to the item in the Star Ledger, which publications are the officially official newspapers for the township of Milburn. Roll call.
Daniel Bear?
Here.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yeah.
Mark Matzle?
Here.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
Angie Vanaya?
Here.
David Morrow?
Here.
Renee Vijay?
Here.
Vice Chairman Miriam Salerno?
Here.
Chairwoman Beth Zoll?
Here. And because we only have one item tonight, it's going to be application 20007. I wanted to first allow Ms. Miggins to recuse herself. Thank you for joining us momentarily and.
Thank you.
Nice evening. Thanks.
Have a lovely evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie.
Beth, just just for the record, I'm here too. Guest on is here.
Guest on is here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guest on. And welcome. And so we are going to move into continuation of the application as we stated. 2000785 Chatham Willen Road. And as such, we'll bring in applicants counsel during listening. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. And good evening to the board.
Evening, welcome back. So tonight, as we continue and leave off from where we left, begin from where we left off. And for everybody who's participating, members of the public who may not have been at all of the meetings or till the end of our most recent one. Just going to provide a quick overview of the plan for tonight's meeting. We're going to begin with public testimony. And we are, and so this is the the public testimony portion, and the way we're going to structure this is we're going to begin with a testimony that we've received from one of the town commissions, a historical preservation commission. And so we will begin with that. And from there, I will ask if there are any other members from the public who are being represented by a third party. That means if you have somebody else. We have not heard of any others, but I want to give that opportunity should should that be on the case. And if so, at that time, when I say it, please use the raise hand function so we can call you in to this panel and you can speak. Following that, we will have members of the public who are participating, community members. And everybody can take a turn to raise your hand using the raise hand function. I believe it's also star six if you're just joining via telephone and that will allow you to have a raised hand. And when you come in to the panel, because this is testimony and not questions. And you'll be asked to turn your camera on if you're able so we can see you and physically see you raise your hand and be sworn in. And then you have three minutes to uninterrupted by us to make your statement. And at the conclusion of the three minutes, Eileen, who will be timekeeping, our secretary, will just let you know, you know, you've hit your time if you're getting there. And ask you to just wrap it up. And after that, you'll be, you know, put back to the participation, you know, the participants group and we'll call in the next person who has hand raised and hopefully we'll get through everybody who would like to make a comment this evening.
Madam Chair, if I could just raise a point, a question with you, there were a number of members of the public who did speak at the last meeting in the public comment. Is this public comment limited to those who have not yet participated in the public comment portion of the application?
So I don't believe we've actually gotten to public testimony yet. We have, we have not yet sworn in people to provide their testimony, their three minutes. Yeah.
It may not have been sworn, but there were a bunch of people who did speak in the public comment portion at the last meeting. I mean, I defer to the chair. I just raised that as a as a question, obviously.
Because they hadn't been sworn in, we're going to allow everybody the opportunity to have their three minutes. And and we're capping it at that. So if people had been doing it under the question portion, they will be given the opportunity to make a public comment.
Okay.
Without any interruptions from us essentially, or, you know, feedback or response. It's just that they will given their airtime.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Boozak, is there anything else that you wanted to cover from a legal standpoint that I did not cover?
No, the only except for one.
Okay.
The fact that members of the public are allocated three minutes, they're not obligated to take three minutes if they don't have anything more to say.
Thank you. You're welcome to use less if you so choose. Thank you. So with no further ado, let's bring in Allison Canfield, who is the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bear.
Yes, I before before we start with testimony from the Historic Preservation Commission. Wanted to ask a couple of questions, if I could, about the reason why the Historic Preservation Commission is being allowed to provide testimony tonight. So my my question to, I guess, you and the vice chair in council is what was the thought process involved in deciding that historic preservation would be allowed to provide testimony tonight? I'd like to understand.
Thank you for the question.
The reasons and the process that you went. Actually, I'll have several questions, but but I'm starting with that.
Okay, great. So as per our typical, you know, we are an appointed board. Environmental Commission is an appointed board and we have from which we have a liaison. They receive application materials in advance. You know, of of meetings so that should they have any feedback to provide, they would. Typically, the case is when a property is going to be in a historically designated zone over which the the district over which the historic preservation commission has more jurisdiction, I suppose, not not complete, but um that's when they would be brought in typically, right? However, they raised the question to our board, to to myself, I talked over with both council and the vice chair. Whether they could provide testimony, given that the site is something that has been. I don't want, I would like to use a more technical term than on their radar because it's something they had identified and had been listed. So they wanted to provide. They have the opportunity to provide that context to our board because it was once the application had begun. The way to deal with it, the way we would like to have it presented is now when we're having testimony.
That seems inconsistent with our ordinance DRZ 806, which is referral development involving historic landmarks and historic districts. And let me just read that for a second if I could. To NJSA 4055D 110, the planning board and the zoning board of adjustment of the township shall refer to the Historic Preservation Commission. Every application for development submitted to either board for development involving historic landmarks or properties located within historic districts identified in the township's historic preservation album and master plan. Now, the site does not contain historic district, nor are we affecting historic district. Historic district is north of this site across two streets and a railroad trestle. And this referral shall be made when the application for development is deemed complete or scheduled for a hearing. At no time do I remember that this board, and it says the planning board. And the definition of the planning board. If you give me a second here, definition of the planning. DRZ 414, the planning board is hereby established consisting of nine members and two alternate members who shall serve for a term pursuant to NJSA 4055D 23. This states that an action needs to be taken by the planning board, not a tribunal or a triumvirate of the planning board. And the planning board is defined as nine members and two alternate members. I don't remember the planning board taking an action to send a particular application over to the Historic Preservation Commission for review and 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 the ordinance states specifically, this would be done if we are in a historic district or we directly affect a historic property on the site. Neither of those two things are happening. So I I'm just questioning the reason why, because I I believe in my opinion that we are in total contradiction to our ordinance that states specifically that the planning board should make this decision to send an application over. So explain to me how three of you made this decision when this property does not contain historic property, nor are we specifically directly affecting historic property and the historic district is located north over two streets and a and a railroad. Now, this doesn't have anything to do with the application. Nor does it have anything to do specifically with the report. I didn't, I didn't read the report and I'd like the minutes to reflect everything I'm saying right now. I would appreciate that, Eileen. I didn't read the report specific for the re for the reasons stated in our ordinance. So so can you explain me why this action is happening tonight? Because it seems to me it's in total contradiction to our our ordinance.
Can I try to answer? Thank you. Go ahead, Ed.
I try to answer some of that anyway. We are hearing the Historic Preservation Commission as a member of the public during public comment. They they got no better rights than anyone else. Anyone can look at the application. If the Historic Preservation Commission on its own decides that they want to do a report, they can do a report. They can then raise whatever they want to raise at the public portion of the hearing. This was not distributed to them for the reasons that that you gave. So they, as anyone else, can get an expert and can come in and say whatever they want to say. It's up to the board to decide whether or not they will take that into account and the weight that they will give it and the credibility they will give it. I I don't know if you're suggesting that the Historic Preservation Commission does not have a right to come to a planning board meeting and during the public portion of the planning board meeting report to the planning board or testify or have testimony to the planning board on on some application. They may not have jurisdiction over it, but that doesn't mean to say they can't comment about it. So if you're, I'm not sure if you're suggesting they should not. They have no right to come to a public meeting and voice a position on an application, assuming, and let me just preface it with this, assuming that the Historic Preservation Commission as a group has taken a position one way or the other. No member of the Historic Preservation Commission can come before the board and say, I'm someone's of the Historic Preservation Commission and I say A, B, and C on the Historic Preservation Commission. That has to be an action that the Historic Preservation Commission takes. If you're all, on the other hand, if you're suggesting that the Historic Preservation Commission has overstepped its bounds, that's a that's a different issue. That's an issue that I ought to vote of the township committee to say, hey, we think your your Historic Preservation Commission is going beyond the bounds and and they are to be reined in. That's not a planning board determination in my view.
No, and I never stated that it wasn't a planning board determination, counsel. What I'm saying here is that our ordinance is very specific about this and our ordinance states specifically that that the planning board needs to take that action and refer a certain application to historic preservation. So it would seem to me that's interesting that Historic Preservation Commission selects specifically that this particular, when in a similar context, the Beehive application, which we heard several weeks ago is is also in the downtown area in which the Historic Preservation Commission just requested funds to do a historic survey of the downtown area. So I just want to, I want to put this information out there for everybody and and because I think that is is a bit unorthodox. In my 12 or 15 years on the planning board, I've never had this happen before and we've had applications in historic areas. But what I just want to say, and and this is just my personal opinion and and anybody else can can opine in a in a in a different way, but your interpretation was different than the chair's counsel. I just want to, I want to make that clear as well. But what I want to say is is that is that I because of what's stated specifically in our ordinance, I object to the reading of this tonight because why should this carry any more weight than any other, any of our our other professional reports? Why are not we not reading the police report or the fire report? Or any other or Tom Doty's report or Martha's report into testimony as well? Okay, so I object to to this being read read tonight. I will not make a formal motion. But I object and I will not use the information tonight in my decision making process on this application specifically because what is stated in our ordinance. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Steinberg?
Yes. The ordinance number 2470-16 Historic Preservation Ordinance of the Township of Milburn contains a section 803.2G, S G as in George. I'm going to read it. Responsibilities to advise and assist township officers, employees, boards. I underline the word boards and other bodies, including those at the county, state, and federal levels on all matters, underline the words all matters, which have potential impact on the historic buildings, structures, objects, sites, or districts in the township. Or on the physical character and ambience of any portion of the township. Not limited to historic districts. It says on the physical character and ambience of any portion of the township. So I think that I started out believing pretty much the way that Dan Bear was indicating until I read very carefully the Historic Preservation Commission memo to this board of March 24, 2021, which quoted that section that I just read. And I came to the conclusion that the board has not only a right, but an obligation to advise the planning board on any matter that the planning board takes up. And I'll read it again. Dealing with sites or districts in the township or on the physical character and ambience of any portion of the township. So I came to the conclusion that the Historic Preservation Commission has the right and as a matter of fact, the obligation under section 803.2G to appear before this board to speak to anything that they feel affects the physical character and ambience of any portion of the township. Again, quoting, directly quoting that section of the ordinance.
Thank you, Joe, for that read. I I hear you and I I understand both sides. Counsel, given what we've heard, would it be best to put to a vote to the board or would I just be permitted to allow us to proceed as we were?
I think we should proceed as we were because, as I said, I think that irrespective of how the board votes, if the Historic Preservation Commission raises their hand and wants to say something, you're going to recognize them and they're going to have an opportunity to to make their case.
Great. And Dan, you hadn't made an official motion as you stated, so.
No, no, I was clear. I was not going to, I was not going to make an official motion.
Okay.
We're not so. So you proceed as you wish.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Allison. Begin.
Well, thank you. I'd first like to thank the planning board.
I apologize. Yeah, we're going to have you sworn in. And that's my.
If you would just raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give and tonight soon? Hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not but the truth?
I do.
If you would just state your name for the record, please.
Allison Canfield.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, thank you again. I want to thank the planning board and chair and council for allowing the Historic Preservation to present testimony to this board this evening. Again, my name is Allison Canfield. I'm I'm chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I hope the board had an opportunity to read the HPC report and the expert testimony from Conley and Hickey Historical Architects. Margaret Hickey will be joining me this evening. So if I could ask Madam Chair to bring her onto this conversation, I really appreciate it. Before I ask Ms. Hickey to speak, I would like to clarify a few things about the HPC and why we are we are here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. I do feel that it is and our commission does feel it is our obligation to come in front of this board and give our opinion on this particular project due to the the actual ordinance that you stated. For for clarification, the HPC does understand this testimony is advisory. It's an advisory opinion. And the exercise of advisory jurisdiction may not be binding, but carries great legal weight and moral authority. HPC is aware and agrees this proposed property is not designated historic. But it is in a historic neighborhood with future designated contributing structures and sites. HPC myth here, HPC is pro-development. But we're toward appropriate development for the communities and the neighborhoods that they're built in. The HPC also believes in affordable housing and it's an important component for the overall development of our town. So I wanted to clarify this to you and where we stand as a historic preservation commission. For those of you who don't know, HPC is a municipal land use board. The historic area that this proposed development will make its home has been approved by the Township Committee in February to start historic designation. So that is the surrounding area of this particular building. The last designation was in 1978, which was 43 years ago. So it wasn't due to the fact that we didn't have additional historic properties. It was just never set forward to designate some of our historic sites. HPC. Yeah, HPC and the expert. I don't want to read it again, but what Joe Joseph Steinberg stated is HPC is here to advise the township. But if you recognize in that, it says on historic building structures, objects, sites, or districts, it does not say historically designated. And I wanted to clarify that. Okay, so thank you again for bringing that out. Historic defined and historic designated defined are two different things. So historic is famous and important in history, which we all know that this particular area has great historical significance. Historic designation is a special status that is added to a historic place. So this is the very definition, this area is the very definition. And the start to Hart's Horns, Mr. Hart's Horns, famous, not my words, ideal town called Downtown Short Hills. With the railroad station he built, he built at his own expense. He put in its own post office to this day, which still holds a separate zip code. The first buyer house, shops, stables, nurseries, all that serviced the area were all in this particular area. And one of, if those who don't know the history, Mr. Stuart Hartshorn, he retained outstanding architects to come in and build the train station, all the areas and all the pieces that enter in this area. So unfortunately, it was not designated, but it is very, very historic. Famous architects and if anyone knows Stamford White, James Brown Lord, these are all people from Madison Square Garden to Rosecliff in Rhode Island. I mean, these are famous architects that he retained to come into this area. So this is the downtown Short Hills. The HPC advisory and expert testimony is here to support the planning board advising as to why this concept proposed architectural design would negatively impact the character of this neighborhood and is not consistent with the settlement agreement. The HPC really would like this board to consider our recommendation before approving this application. So I would like to introduce the HPC's expert, Margaret Hickey with Conley Hickey Historical Architects to speak on behalf of her report. So thank you.
Yes, so Ms. Hickey will have you sworn in.
If you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight? Soon hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not but the truth?
I do.
If you just state your name for the record, please.
It's Margaret Hickey. So I'm a, my name is Margaret Hickey. I'm a historic preservation specialist and a resident architect practicing primarily in New Jersey on the restoration and rehabilitation of historic properties. I have been a partial owner of Colin Hickey since 2003. And I also serve as the Secretary of the Glen Ridge Historic Preservation Commission since 2017. So I am aware of sort of review process with regard to design for new additions and within context of historic and older neighborhoods. So in on March 24th, we submitted a letter which summarized our observations of the proposed design by Minno Wasco Architects. I also attended to the planning board meetings after that letter, since we had come to the process slightly late and have also reviewed the meeting minutes associated with the architect's testimony. In terms of my testimony this evening, it does deal with design, but I'd but I'd like to put it in the context of the proposed plans and elevations as well as Exhibit A, which outlines or I kind of drove the decision-making with regard to the proposed design. And I was wondering if I could share my screen? So this way we could talk to some of the visuals that were presented.
Madam Chair, is it, I mean, this is starting to sound like an objector case. We have a party. Now we're having witnesses who wants to introduce exhibits.
You know, my understanding is the exhibits are what has been shared with you in advance of this meeting.
Well.
In the letter, which has also been posted on the planning board's website for members of the public.
No, I understand that. I'm not objecting to the posting of exhibits. I'm just saying that this, you indicated was the public comment portion of the proceeding at which members of the public would be granted up to three minutes. I think as Mr. Buzak said, they didn't have to use all three minutes. This is not that. This is an objector's case. This is a, this is a, a third party coming before the board objecting to what has been presented and providing testimony. And I don't think that it's appropriate, although I defer to Mr. Buzak, to hear a, an objector's case prior to public comment being completed. But I defer to Mr. Buzak on that. I just wanted to raise that because I don't think that we're, you know, that we're proceeding in the proper way by, by hearing an objector's case during public comment.
I, I, I don't agree with that. I think that after the applicant has completed his case, any objector or third party who, and the way we've done it here was we split it into different segments. One is, we knew the Historic Preservation Commission was going to have someone testify. So they were called on. The next step, if you want to listen to the chair, was to ask for anyone else, whether it's an attorney who was going to present witnesses for, against the application or any member of the public who was going to present or offer a witness, an expert witness, they would go. And then after that, the third portion would occur, which is regular public comment. So it's all part of a public portion of the meeting. So I think that this is a fine way to proceed. And this way then, when the public makes their comments, they will have the benefit of having all the information that has been proffered into the record as, as part of their context when they make their comments. And maybe that would even eliminate some comments. I don't know.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Buzak. So I guess after the Historic Preservation Commission presents its case, then it might be appropriate for any other objector who's going to be providing testimony of experts and the like to be invited prior to public comment. I just wanted to make sure that we're separating the two.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey. Yes, you may share and yes.
Okay, so just, just a point of clarification. This is just a PowerPoint using their exhibits just to, to, so this way I can express some of the work.
You are using exhibits that have already been shown during the application, is what you're saying?
That's right, yes, with, with notes on them.
And that, that's fine.
Okay.
And again, as we had spoken to, being timely, I, you are, you know, permitted a little bit more than the three minutes. And I know we had the discussion about that, but we're still asking you to proceed, you know, effectively.
Understood. Thank you. So can you, can you see the?
Yes.
Um, so there, I really tried to put the context of our comments in with the, with the Exhibit A, with the understanding that this was the document that drove some of the design, design, design decisions. My first point is under 606.4.1. F3, the, one of the design criteria is an amphitheater type step to the courtyard. This is not visible in the current design. And then a point in the, in our letter about the articulation of the base, there is little distinction between the residential and commercial portions of the building in the articulation of the materials and penetration at the ground floor. And I would just like to go back to, or reference back to the base facade detailing portion of Exhibit A. Also, there are canopies noted in the exhibit, but the only one that is referenced is the one along Woodland Road. There are two or three more along Chatham. This, these extra bits of ephemera really help to create a kind of busy architecture, which then skews the, the scale and makes the building seem somewhat overwhelming for the, for the area. And then the, also, the Exhibit A specifically notes that the, what are the, what is being called mansard roofs should be finished with a slate or a simulated slate roofing. Asphalt shingle is not considered a simulated slate roof. And then one of the, our main concerns is the articulation of the mansard or faux-mansard roof at the minor bays, as well as the articulation of the flat roofs with parapet at the main bays. The way these elements are proposed are not, are within architectural vocabulary that's generally acceptable. The mansard roof or the faux-mansard roof is in no way, shape, or form that. I did provide, well, actually, I have a, an example of what a mansard roof actually looks like and a definition of such. What you're seeing in these elevations is not that. And one of the, one of the key elements that you can see where the mansard roof is not articulated is at the corner where it turns at the end of Chatham Road, where it goes down the side drive. That really, it's sort of a, an easy way out because then they would have had to have carried the mansard all the way around. And that really creates a very heavy facade over a very large opening. So a lot of the structural, you know, even though structure can, you can span large widths and everything like that now with steel. In architecture, you really should articulate the structure down to the ground. And this very heavy top over this very large opening, that's just one example of how unsuccessful the, the design is with regard to executing the, the elements that are noted in Exhibit A. And then the similar articulation at the corner. We did not really address the, the areas at the back. We understand that this was a negotiation. We understand how this works. But we thought that the articulation of the facades really do need much more additional detail and thought. There needs to be a rethinking of particularly how the upper part of this building on the, the woodland and Chatham roadside. And we would like to recommend if the planning board would consider creating a design subcommittee or a similar body to refine the design so that the building is better integrated aesthetically with the existing neighborhood and takes into account the historic nature of the existing buildings, which are quite fine and are good representative examples of what the architects could use to develop a design that fits with the existing neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey. Is that, I just want to confirm that that's the conclusion of your testimony?
Yes, I could probably say a lot more, but.
That's fine. And I believe, I just want to reference, I spoke to council about this before, but because this is a testimony, but because it's a, a expert witness, the planning board would have opportunity to ask questions of the witness as well as council for the applicant, but not members of public because it's in public, within public testimony. Is that?
Oh, that is correct.
Correct. Okay, so I will first offer if any members of the planning board have a question for Ms. Hickey. Okay, Mr. Inglesino, do you have any questions of Ms. Hickey?
Yes, Ms. Hickey, had, did you review the settlement agreement between the Township of Milburn and the planning board, which is an exhibit to this case? The settlement agreement dated September 17th of 2019?
I, I did. I'll be honest, I focused specifically on Exhibit A since it dealt with the architecture. That was my main, my main focus or what, what, what I was duty with by the HPC was to look at the architectures primarily.
Okay.
And I looked, and I compared, I compared the design as presented with Exhibit A.
What about Exhibit B, which has the illustrations of the architect?
Well, yes, that's what I, that's, I did look at that as well, of course, yes.
Okay, so the plans, you're aware that the plans that were presented by the architect are right from Exhibit B in the settlement, are you not?
I, I am completely aware of that. And it is, it is, it is unfortunate that terminology such as the mansard roof was used since it is actually not executed properly in this design. So what, what, what the translation, I, I understand where you're coming from. I, I wish someone had come before, before you, you executed this agreement. This building does not work within the neighborhood. And this is what we're trying to tell you. And I tried to cater my comments to that Exhibit A. And that, that, that exhibit can be interpreted in different ways when you, when you use the terminology like mansard roof.
But, but you are, you would agree, would you not, that the illustrative exhibits in Exhibit B are what was presented to the board by the applicant? Would you not?
I, I, I agree, but it also was, it was also a concept design. So this means the design was not fully flushed out. And I, it's my understanding that you have the opportunity to fully flush out the design. It, let's, in, in particular, the articulation of the base specifically states that you, it, it should read as a separate element to the residential areas. And in my professional opinion, it does not.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Inglesino, and thank you, Ms. Hickey. Mark, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have, from Ms. Hickey, just a, a quick question. Do you ever consider, I know that there were a number of people that spoke on behalf of the Hartshorn Arboretum. And it supports a suite of a pretty significant natural infrastructure, 275-year-old tulip trees that have been there that predated any building in Milburn, I believe, or, or Short Hills. I, I was just wondering, do you ever consider that as part of your historic inventories? Like for instance, I know there's a, a national, it's called the National Natural Landmark Designation. There aren't too many of them, but this might qualify.
So when, when we look at neighborhoods and assess their historical value, landscapes are an integral part of looking at the overall, the overall area. So whether you're looking, when you're looking at a district, you're not only looking at the individual properties, but you're looking at the streetscape, the street elements, the view sheds, how the landscape, how, how the land has been developed with regard to whether it's a natural preserve, whether, how, how much the topography has been manipulated. There's a lot that goes into looking at a historic district or potential historic district for its value and whether it holds integrity to be listed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for the testimony. So I mean, I think we can have Allison and Margaret return to the attendee mode. And as I stated before, at this time, if, Ed echoed, oh, sorry, Jorge, I see you now waving.
Yeah, can I ask you a question, maybe to you or to Jorge? So as the Historic Preservation Board has just spoke, can I speak as the liaison between the Environmental Commission and the planning board? Because we also have so many things to say or does not allow at this moment? When I will be allowed to speak as the Environmental Commission?
If I might, Madam Chair. If the, if the Environmental Commission has reviewed the application and taken a position on it as the Environmental Commission, then I think you have the ability or another member of the Environmental Commission has the ability to pass that along to the board. If it's, it's simply your view, and I don't mean to denigrate that, but if it's your view based upon your experience and you are a member of the Environmental Commission, then I think you have to speak on behalf of the Environmental Commission. And I, I believe that in this case, the, that is in the Historic Preservation Commission case, that the Historic Preservation Commission actually reviewed the report, endorsed the report and authorized it to be brought before the planning board. I don't, I don't know if that happened with the Environmental Commission.
So we reviewed that and we were talking in many meetings about this application. We have a, a few, two people working on this report. When we were about to send the report, we were told as that we couldn't because there was a liaison, which is me, so I can speak for the Environmental Commission. So I would like to know if I can do it now, if I should do it at the end. It should be, I don't know. At some point, I would like to, to talk about that.
Was, was the report reviewed and approved by the Environmental Commission?
It was a discussion between all the members of the Environmental Commission. And we didn't write the report because, again, we were told that we couldn't submit a report because it was late, whatever. We couldn't do it.
Okay, I, and I appreciate, I think some of the facts are, you know, it's sort of a game of tag and it doesn't matter because here we are tonight at the meeting. So members of the public, as has been told and I believe was the feedback given to the Environmental Commission, are permitted to come and individually take their time and make the statements. Joe, one moment, I do see you. I'll just come to you in a second. And just as I had stated before, the Environmental Commission is given the courtesy of receiving the application, you know, just like the Forester and Fire Department and request, you know, any professional report feedback that they would like to provide, you know, before we jump into an application. And so that's why when we say it was too late, it wasn't, no, we don't want to hear from you and don't even bother. It was just, that was the time when we had requested it. And now, yes, and you've been the liaison and during the whole application, you've asked questions which hopefully are with the Environmental Commission in mind. So I guess I, I don't know if what you're saying is you want to make a statement, you know, reflecting what the Environmental Commission wants to say or what Jorge wants to say.
About, yeah, it's also a few questions that we have. And it wasn't answered during all this time. So at the conclusion during the last meeting, we talked about a few items that we would like to, to talk in this meeting.
You certainly have the right to raise any of those questions.
Absolutely. I think if, I don't know when the right moment is. I think right now I wanted to talk about those other third parties. And I don't, it doesn't sound like that is what you're, I, I, I'm not anticipating any because we hadn't been raised any. I just want to offer that opportunity. And then Ed, maybe you can make a suggestion if Jorge should go. Because I believe there are members of the commission who are here who want to speak as members of the public and provide, you know, some of these statements and questions as well. Okay, and Mr. Steinberg, go ahead, Joe.
I just want the record to be clear. Several people, including Mr. Buzak and yourself, Madam Chair, have referred to the Historic Preservation Commission as the Environmental Commission. That's wrong. It's not the Environmental Commission.
I agree. I think Jorge is referencing the Environmental Commission because he's the liaison. So we were talking about his position.
I understand, I understand that.
Okay, apologies if we spoke.
Previously, I just want the record to be clear that when the transcript of this, of this hearing is made on several occasions, the Environmental Commission was substituted for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so with that, let me proceed by just asking, please use the, the raise hand function. Should you be a member of the public who is here tonight and represented by a third party and, and will be presenting testimony? So I do see a hand is raised. Dr. Elise Morton. Dr. Elise Morton. And I don't know if you are, we're going to bring you in, and you can just let us know if that's an accidental, or, or if it's correct, good evening.
Hi, I, I'm not sure, I think so, so I, I just would like to speak on, um, the, some of the environmental impacts.
So are you here as a member of the public, bringing somebody else to present a testimony?
Uh, I am the person that's been brought to present a testimony.
So that, that comes the next, next stage?
Yeah. No, 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 it's okay, thank you for clarifying. Um, so that said, well, I mean, before you send, um, Ms. Morton anywhere, Dr. Morton anywhere, um, Ed is, I mean, it sounds like we have somebody who's speaking on behalf of the environmental concerns, I didn't, I didn't catch if, if she said Environmental Commission or not, yes, she's nodding out.
Environmental concerns, yeah.
So, uh, let, let me just make it clear, is there, is there any attorney who's present at this meeting representing a, uh, an interested party on this application, if you can raise your hand? I can't, I can't see anything, but I'll leave it to the monitors here to, uh.
Don't think so at this time.
Second, second question, is there any member of the public who intends to present a third party, such as a planner or an engineer, or an environmentalist, or anyone who will testify on their behalf, that is, give expert testimony to the board in connection with this application?
No hands.
Okay, so now we're, we, we got to the third stage, I think, which is the members of the public speaking for themselves. So, uh, I'll pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you, um. So given this, we're now at this point, and, and, and I guess I still want to just confirm or confer on when is the appropriate time to have Jorge speak, and perhaps we do that at the conclusion, I guess if there are any remaining questions or, um, comments that haven't yet been raised, Jorge, would you be comfortable with that, um, asking, okay, great. Um, so that said, for all participants, um, if you'd like to start raising your hand, use the raise hand function, and, um, this staff, it will bring us in one at a time, as I had said earlier, for those of you who missed it, you will be given three minutes, and at the conclusion of the three minutes, um, this staff, it will just say, you're at three minutes, please, you know, wrap up your sentence, and, and then we will thank you, and you will be back, put back in attendee mode, before you begin speaking, we will have you, you know, show your face, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. Um, so thank you, so with that, um, Dr. Morton, you are still with us here in the room, so you, uh, can unmute, and, uh, we will have you sworn in and begin your time.
If you, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not but truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Elise Morton.
Thank you.
Um, and then just quickly, so I have, uh, I have some slides, am I allowed to share those, or should I just, is it better for me just to read?
I, I think you're just going to speak, I don't, Ed, you're, yeah, you're just, we're just having you speak.
Okay, okay, um, so, uh, so my name is Elise Morton, and I'm an assistant uh, professor at Fairleigh Dickinson University, my area of, of expertise is avian ecology and conservation, so I work with birds. Uh, and I just wanted to, to comment on the, the development plans for this building, specifically the, the rooftop decks, uh, the lights, and the, the non-bird safe windows that will be located uh, directly next to the Cora Hartshorn, uh, Arboretum and Bird Sanctuary. Um, so, I just, given widespread habitat loss, natural reservoirs like the Arboretum are really important, they provide critical habitats that threaten and declining wildlife, uh, making them especially important to protect. Additionally, the Arboretum is located in the middle of what's called the Atlantic Flyways, so that's one of the major migratory flyways for birds. It's used by millions of birds twice a year, including over a hundred species, some of which are threatened, uh, such as the Golden Range and Cerulean Warblers. Uh, so this is particularly important, as our birds are disappearing, a study in two thousand nineteen estimated uh, two point nine billion birds have been lost since nineteen seventies, so that's one-third of all birds. Um, so pretty, pretty horrifying. Um, second only to cats, the primary cause of mortality of birds are buildings and windows. So they kill an estimated of five percent of all migratory passerings. Um, birds, birds are vulnerable to this, because they can't detect glass as a solid surface, uh, either because of transparency and/or reflections that mirror the natural environment. Um, so not just windows, artificial light at night also poses a significant threat to birds, particularly nocturnal migrants, which become trapped and disoriented in nighttime lights. Uh, so there are several factors that generate this problem, first, where birds orient towards the sun, so they're attracted to those lights. Uh, second, a, a lot of collision victims, especially songbirds, normally they're active during the day. Um, they're, and their eyes are specialized for bright light. But even though they migrate at night, these birds have, have pretty bad night vision. And instead of, oh, thirty seconds, okay, so nighttime lights is also a, a particular problem, it causes birds to um, basically come down to the ground, either they're exhausted from circling in that light, and they can't continue with their migration, and then they're also more likely to, to collide with buildings. Um, so they're, they're particularly vulnerable, uh, and I think even if you don't care about birds, um, there are a number of new legislative measures that are going into effect that limit the use of nighttime lights. Um, and so it's potentially risky to invest in something like this, which might, um, in the future, not, not even be, um, viable to use. Um, there's also the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, um, which prohibits the act, even the accidental killing of birds. Um, so I think this is something also to, to be considered. Um, nothing of birds was in the environmental impact statement that I saw, um, nor were these lights accounted for the rooftop rooftop decks or the, or the windows, so that's all, thank you.
Three minutes.
Thank you. Okay. And I mean, you can bring in the next member. Stephanie Nesser.
Hi.
Hi.
I will have you sworn in.
Do you just, do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not but the truth?
I do.
Just please, Steph, state your name for the record.
Stephanie Nesser. Um, I live at seventy-nine Stony Lane in Short Hills, that's about three blocks from the planned development. Um, I'm asking the board to please reject the two rooftop decks, and in the alternative, limit the size of the decks and the hours of operation, and ensure that if there is excessive noise, that the police have the ability to access the buildings. When we purchased our home in the Oak Hill Estates more than twenty years ago, it was a decision about not just a home, but a neighborhood as well. And after the purchase, I actually stood in the backyard of our current house to listen for the train noise, to ensure that it wasn't too loud and disruptive. We all have certain visions and expectations when moving to a new neighborhood, and one like the Oak Hill Estate, surrounded by beautiful old trees, enclosed by the Arboretum, and full of quaint old homes, have lived up to those expectations. These expectations are also reinforced with the protection of Milburn Township ordinances like Chapter Three that enumerates noise restrictions. In order to ensure that our neighborhood remains peaceful, the police must, if called to the development due to disturbing noise from the rooftop decks, be able to stop violators. In the twenty-one years that we have lived here, we have never had to call the police for any noise violations on the part of our neighbors. But had we done so, I'm imagining that it would be fairly simple for the police to register complaints by either ringing the doorbell or walking to the backyard of the offending neighbor. Not such a simple thing when noise is coming from a locked, multi-story building with multiple tenants. I understand from testimony that management will not have anyone on the premises after business hours, and that there will be no way for police to access the building, should there be any complaints about the noise from the rooftop decks. I'm asking the board to demand that the developer provide police with a way to access the buildings at all times. There are other ways to ensure that our neighborhood remains the quiet oasis that it is. The board can limit the size of the rooftop decks and the hours of operation. There are a planned sixty-two units, and the development is being marketed to young professionals, a demographic that typically creates more noise in social settings later at night, when compared to families living in single residential houses. This potential for noisy gatherings will only be exacerbated and encouraged with the inclusion of an outdoor bar space, and will extend beyond the warmer months if outdoor heaters and fire pits are allowed. Therefore, I'm asking the board to limit the size of the decks to allow for smaller, rather than large gatherings, disallow bar space, outdoor heaters and fire pits, and direct the developer to close the decks at nine P M. For the twenty-one years that we have lived in this quaint, close-knit residential neighborhood, our expectations of a peaceful green oasis has been, have been exceeded. I hope that in the spirit of neighborliness and community, that the board rejects outright the inclusion of the rooftop decks, but in the alternative, ensures the police have access to the buildings at all times, limits the size of the decks and the hours of operation, and disallows bar space, outdoor heaters, and fire pits, thank you.
Bye. Thank you, Ms. Nesser. Okay, our next member of the public is, um, John Fox. Mr. Foxy should be in, if you're able to, um, unmute yourself and turn the camera on.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Fox, if you just raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
Swear from the testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not but the truth?
I do.
Uh, name and address for the record.
Uh, John Fox, one oh two Oakview Terrace, uh, which is the stones fro- throw from the new development. Um, I just want to spend my three minutes talking a little bit about the traffic issue, um, and the studies which have been done. I know in, uh, twenty twenty, the board asked Silverman to provide a traffic study as part of their application, and, uh, as we all know, traffic can be, can seriously impact the safety of streets and quality of life in a neighborhood. The resultant study, uh, had some defects, but Silverman's expert, Gary Dean, uh, testified that the sixty-two unit development would generate less traffic than the combination of a small gas station, a small, mostly empty office building on Woodland, and a small dental office building on Chatham. Um, the pandemic kept Mr. Dean's company from reliably observing traffic, so he based his report on a prior study commissioned by the town and done in late July of twenty nineteen. Uh, for that report, Stan Tech Consulting Services observed the Chatham-Woodland intersection and predicted that the development would add little traffic to its light, to its generally light traffic. Um, in rather arcane language, they predicted that, quote, "A ninety-fifth percentile queuing would be approximately one vehicle." Um, I interpret that to mean that, uh, every twenty times a car comes to the intersection, only once would it have to wait for a car in front of it. I'm not sure that agrees with my own experience driving up Woodland, but so be it. The report also claimed that there would be no change in traffic to Summit Medical Offices, a conclusion Mr. Dean relied on. As we know, however, traffic to those offices will move from Woodland to Chatham. Um, that's an important shift with real implications. Uh, Stan Tech was not called to testify about any of this. But the major problem with Stan Tech's report is that it was done in late July and didn't capture Glenwood School pedestrian or vehicular traffic. When asked about this by Tom Herbertson at the February twenty-fourth board meeting, Mr. Dean said, and I quote, "Irrespective of the road and how close it is to a school, I've never seen a case where traffic volume doubled between summer and non-summer." That's kind of an astonishing statement, I mean, traffic by the Glenwood School is all but nonexistent in summer. Um, does it more than double when school is in session? Not according to Mr. Dean. But really, this past Monday, I was walking on Chatham Road and counted forty-five cars, bumper to bumper, from Taylor Road, where the school is, all the way back to within thirty feet of the Silverman site. If Mr. Dean or Stan Tech had analyzed neighborhood traffic patterns, they would have seen that there are only two feeder points to the Glenwood School from outside its contiguous neighborhood. One is via Forest Drive, under the train tracks, onto Chatham Road. The other is through the Chatham-Woodland intersection, the very intersection under discussion. All cars driving to and from Glenwood School pass through one or other of those choke points. Both, both traffic studies entirely ignore this, something I find troubling. Before the board approves this application, it really needs reliable research on this, and it owes that to the community, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Okay, um, Regina Truitt, you should be with us, good evening.
Hi, guys.
We'll have you sworn in.
Do you swear, just raise your right, right hand, do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Thanks, Regina Truitt, three eighty-five Hartshorn Drive in Short Hills.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so, um, I'd like to start out by pointing out that Milburn Township has an obligation to nurture the land that is now known as Cora Hartshorn Arboretum and Bird Sanctuary. This obligation derives not only from the affection many of us have feel for the Arboretum, but also by ordinance, let me explain. When Cora Hartshorn died in nineteen fifty-eight, after a long and productive life, she bequeathed track of land to Milburn Township. This gift was made with a provision, a proviso, that the township continue and maintain the reservation for wildflowers, trees, and birds. Ms. Hartshorn's will further stipulated that the acceptance by the township shall be deemed to be in agreement to comply with those directions with scrupulous, scrupulous honor and fidelity. On December fifteenth, nineteen fifty-eight, the township of Milburn adopted an ordinance accepting a devise of Cora Hartshorn's land and stonehouse, in pursuance with the conditions and provisions of her last will and testament. The township clerk signed and affixed the seal of the township on this, uh, document on December sixteenth, nineteen fifty-eight. A partic- of particular concern with the planned development on this special site are the effects of the artificial light at night, as Dr. Morton discussed, noise and smoke from the rooftop decks towering next to and over the Arboretum's precious woodlands. In the application's environmental impact statement, several ports, several of reports are actually dated October twenty-eight, two thousand eight, on letterhead from Governor Chris Christie, and there is no mention of the effects of the rooftop decks on the environment at all. This is almost certainly due to the late surprise addition of the rooftop decks after the concept plan and after the settlement. Thus, the environmental impact statement is incomplete. I'm going to talk briefly about lighting. Silverman's current plan calls for multiple unshielded three thousand K, twenty-three watt L E D light fixtures, which are considered blue-rich by wildlife experts, shining up into the sky and down onto the Arboretum and the woodlands. Twenty-three watt L E D bulbs are equivalent to one hundred to two hundred incandescent light, thus very, very bright. And these fixtures will be located on the rooftop deck until ten P M. each night, and in several places all over the property, on all night. And Dr. Morton discussed bird-unfriendly lights and windows, rather. Multiple local and migratory birds seeking refuge in the Arboretum's trees will be lured to the structure by artificial lighting at night, and will perish there upon impact with the non-bird-friendly window glass. By morning, vultures will collect the fallen songbirds. This will be the fate if non-bird-friendly lights, uh, sorry, windows, window glass is not used.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, as such, the plan presented to the township for this construction and this location, by allowing rooftop decks and lacking bird-friendly materials violates the township's acceptance ordinance dated December sixteenth, nineteen fifty-eight, by creating circumstances which knowingly bring harm to the Arboretum's woodlands, floor, and fauna. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Okay. And, I mean, I do recall, um, I know Elaine Becker will be wanting to make comments, um, via phone, so I know you had talked about, um, bringing her in as well. Um, Jonathan, it looks like you're with us, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, here we go, okay.
Hi.
Good evening, so we'll have you sworn in.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not but the truth?
Yes.
Your name, um, and address for the record, please.
Jonathan Abrams, sixty-five, no, I have some feedback here.
You joined on two different devices, possibly?
Yeah, I'm going to turn one.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, um, it's my understanding that David, uh, more of the, uh, first alderman is a commercial real estate broker. I, uh, have a question, uh, as whether or not he has had any role in any commercial real estate, uh, with the, um, Silverman Group, the S L Management Group, C R, C and R Property Management, or S L Investment Partners. And the question is, is there a conflict of interest, and should
And the question is, is there a conflict of interest and should he recuse himself because of his role as a commercial real estate broker?
You're muted.
I'm trying, I didn't reach to get the name of the witness.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, it says Jonathan. I didn't hear your last name. Did you state your name for the record? I apologize.
It was Abrams.
Abrams, okay, thank you. And Mr. Bozak, I don't know if you are providing a response to the comment.
Well, my, first I needed his name because I didn't catch it either because of the feedback. But secondly, this is the public portion, make public comments, not questions. And in any event, even if it were questions, a member of the public cannot question members of the board about anything. So they can raise an issue, they want to raise an issue, that's fine, but the board is not here to be interrogated by the public. It's the application that is the subject matter of the hearing.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Abrams, I don't know if you had any other comments that you wanted to make at this time? Okay.
Where you want? I'll see him.
Nope, I think he's off, off camera, so Eileen will assume. Provided his. Okay, Lynn Riney, you should now be with us. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you very much.
Hey, need to see you.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I see that. There we go.
Wait, just raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Lynn Riney, 94 Oakview Terrace, Short Hills.
Thank you.
Okay, I am former longtime curator of the Historical Society Museum and a former naturalist at the Arboretum many years ago. And it's there where my interest is. About five years ago, the Melbourne Fire Department collected data on potential wildfire threats and launched a campaign to help residents safeguard their property. An article about the program noted that the fire department commented, quote, "Residents of Melbourne Short Hills are fortunate to live adjacent to wooded areas, including the 2,000-acre South Mountain Reservation, the Oakie Track and the Cora Harshorn Arboretum." They added, "The town's proximity to these wild lands affords residents the opportunity to observe wildlife and enjoy the tranquility of nature. But if a fire occurred in a wooded area near township homes, the potential for a disaster would be high." There have been fires in the arboretum throughout the years that I've lived here, and that's close to 50 years. And that frightens every one of us, especially those of us who live within feet of the arboretum. Years ago, a neighborhood pyromaniac set fires in there almost weekly. But the thing that really alarms me is the most, is now that in her little history, Short Hills, Cora Harshorn noted that sparks from passing trains set off regular wildfires in the arboretum, which is why they built the stone wall there to act as a fire break. Note that our contiguous houses were not built right next to the arboretum then. With the help of a neighbor, we determined that the distance from the train tracks to the arboretum today is twice the distance to the arboretum from the proposed rooftop open rooftop, I'm sorry, there's a catfight going on next to me, from the proposed open, I lost my spot here, open rooftop grills and fire pits. How much more of a threat to our homes and lives would be the sparks that would now come from above, from that rooftop to the canopy of the arboretum trees with even just a little gust of wind? And in the autumn, when fallen leaf debris litters the floor of the arboretum and people want to huddle around those fire pits on chillier nights, how much of a threat will that be? And who monitors? I'm sorry, somebody's talking to me or something.
Just letting you know, your time is almost up.
All right. And who monitors those open sources of fire after the chill drives the roof topers inside? The, is that the time?
No, I just think there's some feedback. You can finish your statement.
Okay, I'm sorry. Article four of the general provisions of Melbourne Township's ordinance charges the administrating boards and commissions to apply the rules, regulations and standards, which shall be considered the minimum requirements for the protection of public health, safety and the welfare of the citizens of the township of Melbourne. This unapproved rooftop addition to the approved development plan is, as history shows us, a genuine threat to the residences and the residents in the area of the arboretum. And I am concerned about fire apparatus being able to get onto the property if no fire access road has been developed as the fire department requested. I can't reconcile the serious potential threat of to loss of life or habitat, ours and that of the flora and fauna in the arboretum. And I hope that the administrative bodies here will recognize they have an obligation to protect all of us from the threat of fires from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ed Schwartz, you should be with us now.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
We can. Are we able to see you? I don't know if you've joined via phone or Zoom.
I don't know, mine on iPad, I see you, but I guess you guys don't see me.
You need to turn on your video.
There should be a little, like, it looks like a bit, yeah, you did it.
There we go, okay.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Ed Schwartz, and I reside at 22 Farview Road, Melbourne. I'm a real estate developer and property owner. I appear before you to advocate for electric charging stations within the township, including private and public places. I'm thinking of the Woodland Road development, but I also wonder about the Short Hills Mall. If you go to Jersey Gardens, you will find a bank of Evo, EZ Go charging stations, and next to it, a bank of Tesla charging stations. So when people go shopping, they charge the cars. Okay? And when it comes to public land, I'm thinking about municipal parking lots. For example, South Orange, where I used to live, four or five years ago, installed three charging stations behind the firehouse there in the public parking space. And the way it works is you pay a dollar an hour to park there and charge your car versus the normal 50% rate per hour. So they get reimbursed. Electric city-powered automobiles are the future, and Melbourne should promote the use of them. Charging stations are the 21st century version of polluting gas stations. Now, I'm an electric car owner, and there are more and more of us day by day. Now, as a real estate owner, I can tell you that we will be retrofitting our multifamily rental complexes with charging stations. We believe this is not only a positive environmental community statement, but also an amenity for our tenants. Now, I've researched companies that supply stations under various business plans. Two of such companies are Blink, B-L-I-N-K, and Seman Connect, S-E-M-A-N Connect. Now, I have information about both of these, and I'd be glad to share that with the board and deliver that information to you, but it's quite easy to just Google those, both companies, Blink and Seman Connect. To me, it is not an issue to install charging stations, as these companies will take all the managerial issues upon themselves. Revenue from the drivers eventually will reimburse the upfront cost of purchasing. Let's now, today, be as a community on the forefront of what we need to plan for going forward to ensure that our offspring and theirs have a planet safe to live in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Okay. Ms. Shear, you're with us.
Yes, thank you. Wait, just one second.
Just raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Beatrix W. Shear, 101 Oakview Terrace, Short Hills. The explanation of accessory use law recited at the last hearing by the developers planner, Mr. Tobia, who is not a lawyer, was misleading. The law has been further interpreted since the 1978 PTL case, and later cases mandate consideration of the impact of the use on the surrounding neighborhood. In the 1997 Tannis case, the New Jersey Superior Court's appellate division explicitly said that impact on the surrounding neighborhood should be considered. Similarly, in the 1998 Shim case, the court said that accessory use determination should focus on problems posed by the use and its impact on its surroundings. And in the 1998 Colts Run Civic Association case, the court said that although accessory uses should not be unduly restricted, they are not without limitation, which is reached when the use impairs the residential character of the neighborhood. Furthermore, the Colts Run case, the court in the Colts Run case pointed out that neighborhood aesthetics can affect property values. I implore the planning board to remember when it makes its rooftop decks decision. The Goal 101 of Melbourne Township's master plan includes protecting the character of residential neighborhoods, and also that in Section 5 of the settlement agreement, the developer acknowledged the concerns of the township and the neighborhood and agreed that its planning board applications would be consistent with the context, I'm sorry, the concept plans attached to the settlement. Those plans do not include rooftop decks. The rooftop decks would be terrible for Glenwood. Unwanted music and other noise being carried into the neighborhood from the decks, creating noise pollution at the Harshorn Arboretum, as well as for residents, and unwanted smoke and odors from cooking, as well as from completely legal marijuana use, would float down from the decks into Glenwood. My house on Oakview Terrace is on the slope of a hill, as are others on my side of the street, and the proposed Arboretum Edge rooftop decks, the deck, the Arboretum Edge one, would be visible from my property, which would doubtless decrease its value. In addition, the deck with grills and fire tables the developer wants to build just above the development's courtyard plaza will face Oakview Terrace and Woodland Road without any buffer at all until Phase 2 of the project is built. What's more, both decks would be visible from the arboretum, disturbing the visual peace and serenity of people who walk in the arboretum's hills to enjoy nature. Drinking and rooftop parties will be permitted on the decks, and rowdy behavior can be expected, especially from young adults, who will likely rent many of the developments, mostly two-bedroom plus den apartments, as roommates. And Mr. Tobia admitted that bad apples among those who will use the decks are anticipated. Neighbors won't even be able to enter the development to let those on the decks know how they are disturbing others. And the developer admits it will have virtually no management staff on the premises, only visits from management two or three days a week. Neighbors can contact the police to enforce noise and occupancy ordinances, but the legally enforceable occupancy limits are 260 for one deck and 186 for the other. The developer has promised to write lease provisions and post signs about reduced occupancy limits, no smoking and house rules, but it has no plans for real-time enforcement. I'm almost through. Worst of all is the fire hazard. The decks are not included in the plan reviewed by our fire marshal, so we never evaluated fire risks from them and their grills and fire tables. If the decks are allowed, leaves from the arboretum and elsewhere will drop or be blown onto the grills and fire cigarettes, fireworks and other incendiary objects will doubtless be thrown over the 42-inch wall facing the arboretum. Furthermore, there was no testimony about how the development would ensure that gas fires will be out when there are no residents on the decks. The planning board must not approve a site, I'm sorry, a site plan for the Chatham-Woodland Road development that includes rooftop decks. Instead, the board must protect our neighborhood, this little bit of heaven loved by the residents, from being subjected to the negative impact rooftop decks would create. Thank you. I'm sorry if I ran, I'm sorry, ran a little bit over.
Thank you, Beth, thank you for your comment. Okay. Sanford Kimmel, you are with us. And you should be able to unmute. Oh. Mr. Kimmel, I think you're trying to turn your camera on, but you might have started screen sharing, but that's okay if you can just try to unmute. It. It looks like an oval with a line diagonally to, you know, the no sign, but it looks like a microphone, kind of an oval shape, if you're seeing that on your screen. I think he's left. Okay, well, hopefully he can join again and rejoin and make his comment. Okay, why don't we move on and then we can try to look for him and come back. Oh, Darka, you are with us.
There we go. Can you see me? Thank you.
Just raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give tonight's be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, it'll be truthful and it'll be, yes.
Say your name and address for the record.
Oh, Darka Stocker, 29 Norwood Terrace, Melbourne, New Jersey. I'm a 25-year resident. I'm also a member of the Environmental Commission, and as I understand, we were told that if we did write a letter, it would not be accepted or allowed to be read. So I'm just going to make that comment because there were questions about that earlier in the day, but I'm going to get to my testimony now. Not my testimony, my thoughts on our situation. One thing is, I have read this. I want you to know, I've read the AIS. And according to our own code, DRZ 509.5, the law requires a description, this is for the environmental assessment, impact assessment statement. The law requires a description of steps to be taken to minimize environmental impacts and should include maps, schedules, and explanation of steps to be taken. This portion appears to be completely absent from the document. And although it's clear that the lot is adjacent to and partly within the riparian zone, which will be disturbed along its entire length during the construction and also during the maintenance of this building that is in some locations, not only on the riparian zone, but where it's not on the riparian zone, it abuts the riparian zone or is within one to six feet of the riparian zone. So anytime you have to do siding and so forth, they will be imposing onto the riparian zone. Now, I wanted to also comment, there were other issues with the DRZ 509 in various sections. I'm not going to list them all because it's not, it's not possible to cover everything. Now, I'd also like to cover ordinance 2374.11. This is Code 706.11. This is the riparian zone ordinance that we have. It is a very strong ordinance, I want to tell you. I've read most of that as well, and I certainly cannot cover it. I wish I could submit something in writing because it is very hard in three minutes to cover the material, but I'm going to give you the highlights in here. So on 706.5, use is permitted in a riparian zone. There are two categories. We're in the secondary category, all other riparian zones. I'm just going to read a brief quote from here. "The following uses are permitted either by right or after review and approval by the municipality in a riparian zone. No new construction, development, use, activity, encroachment or structural self shall take place in a riparian zone, except as specifically authorized in this section." And I'm going to briefly tell you the sections because they're too long to read. One is open space use, two is fences, three is crossings, and four is stream bank stabilization. None of these apply to this development. Next, I would like to rush over into another riparian zone, 706.11. There's also a riparian zone management. There's also a riparian zone management plan that's been completely neglected, ignored, and I will read you item C under eight. The plan shall be-
Give it your time, but I allow you to just finish the thought that you're on.
"The plan shall be reviewed and must be approved by the engineer of the township in consultation with the Environmental Commission as part of the subdivision and land development process. I'm on the commission. We have not seen this document. I cannot find it on the website. It is just missing." It's as if no one knows this, this building is in a riparian zone or we do not know what a riparian zone is. It's quite astounding. I do need to say one more thing. I've spoken to the township engineer about remnants of a cemetery on the neighboring property. There needs to be a presence or absence exam of the area to assure that there is no remains in the ground and that they don't extend to this property. They're very close to the property line.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel.
There's more, and I would like to submit more. Am I allowed to?
That was the time for the, so I just want to clarify because it's-
For a site like this with this many problems in it.
If I may, and we gave you your time and then some, I just, I want to clarify, which I attempted to do before, but you're making an accusation that we're not allowing you to make a statement, and that is not accurate. You are on the Environmental Commission, which is a commission that receives application materials in advance.
And we were told not to write a letter because it would be rejected.
If you would allow me to finish. In advance of the beginning of the first hearing, so the very beginning of this process, which goes back to September of 2020, before we began the hearings, everything was provided as they are for all applications from the planning board to the Environmental Commission. At that point, you're offered the opportunity to review it. I also served on the Environmental Commission, so I have had this experience, and you can, as a commission, draft a letter, you know, and submit it as part of the application process, just like we have from the forester, the fire, police, and other professional reports. So that was the opportunity, and that is the time, and that is when we invite the Environmental Commission to present a letter. You did not, I understand that you have wanted to since, and I understand that, but-
But we have no way, we have no way of sharing our concerns because these many things I've submitted to you today are about items that were submitted, like the environmental assessment statement wasn't available back then. You know, many of our concerns have come out of the process, in fact, that you have been managing.
And I appreciate that. I think we can definitely talk about the process for going forward, but I don't think stating that we aren't allowing the Environmental Commission to, you know, had you raised concerns about the lack of an environmental impact statement, you know, at the beginning with?
I'm sorry, the lawyer of the township asked if we had a prepared statement. I'm just trying to clarify why there's no prepared statement. That's all. Right? That that was our township lawyer?
That Ed Buzyk is the planning board attorney.
Right, so that's, so he's right, so he's asking why we haven't, don't have a prepared letter. I'm explaining.
I don't think he was asking why. I think he was asking whether, and so, yes, understood.
Okay, but that, all right.
Okay, I just, I just felt that I would also like the opportunity to explain the process because it didn't feel-
Is the process in the code somewhere? Because I couldn't find it. I searched everywhere.
I'm not sure if it's in the code. I can, I can confirm and check, so that is- the process by which we have governed and used the planning board in the four years that I've served on it.
Okay, I'd love to.
It may not be codified, we can confirm. And I think it's a good, healthy reminder to, you know, to check and to think about these processes, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cosgrove, you should be with us.
Can you hear me?
I can hear and see you.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight's zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and address for the record.
David Cosgrove, it's 99 Oakview Terrace in Short Hills.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Thank you, folks. I'd start out by saying I'd like you to say no to these decks. You folks are, this board is a party to the settlement agreement, and you need to enforce the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement requires setbacks. It limits the height and it limits the stories. Allowing rooftop decks violates those requirements, creates additional structures on the top and living spaces. The building without decks still has an indoor party room, a gym, and a huge outdoor courtyard. The phase one deck on the third floor is 3,900 square feet with a capacity of 260. The phase two arboretum deck is 2790 square feet with a capacity of 186. That's 6,690 square feet, 446 people. I'm using the full occupancy because you all know that any attempt to control the crowd size, the activities, or the times won't work. There's only one reason to have three outdoor areas. It's to fill them up to capacity. The recent Airbnb ordinance in the town is an admission that the town can't effectively control tenant misbehavior. At the September 3, 2019 Township Committee meeting, you were told by Mr. Phillips that there would be no surprises. At the September 4 Planning Board meeting, he told you that the details, the amenities are locked in. Recall my question to Mr. Tobia about his statement at the January 3 fairness hearing, that this was Phillips's baby. I was at that hearing and it was said, if there's any question, Mr. Buzyk, I'm sure can get you a transcript. The settlement and the agreement that were presented to the court at that fairness hearing had no decks. And most importantly, as your counsel can confirm to you, you have the ability to disregard any and all of the testimony of the Silverman witnesses. If you have questions as to any credibility issue on anything they said, you can simply ignore what they said if you did not find them credible. If a deck was customary, it would be listed in the settlement agreement, not to mention two decks that were mysteriously not mentioned. On Silverman's own website, you won't see anything like this on one of their buildings. The developer has suggested that if there were problems with noise, we would call the front desk. When this matter first appeared, I reached out to the developer and the Summit Medical Group. Neither of them would speak to me. I will be able to hear the decks. I know because I hear the boxcar, which is even further away. While I urge you not to approve this application, if you do, please consider imposing some additional conditions. The size and number of the decks need to be scaled down significantly, so you can't put more people on them than planned. There should be no live bands or amplification equipment allowed, no planned events for residents unless a building representative is present for the whole time. No open flames, no smoking, no umbrellas. They're going to blow off the roof and hit a kid. No pergwas, no commercial activities, and no television or movie projection equipment allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove.
Okay, Mark, let's hang out. Hello?
Hi, Darren. We can, we can hear you, but we can't see you yet.
Oh, okay. So that's, that picture is my husband. Start my video. Okay. Hi.
Hi, just raise your right hand, please. If you were just, do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight's zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Allison Roth, 36 Elmwood Place, Short Hills. So my concern, I just have really, I mean, I agree with everybody else's concerns about the arboretum and everything else, the development, but I'm, my concern tonight is to safety issues, which I think need to be addressed. One are these fire pits. I think they should be struck from the design. There are too many unknowns that could happen, too many, maybe unattended, improperly used. There's absolutely no reason why we need to have fire pits and incur that safety risk to our community. I personally have been in two fires. My school burnt down when I was in elementary school. And also, the apartment building that I lived in, in Manhattan, also caught fire. So accidents do happen, and I am proposing that this is unnecessary. We don't need these fire pits on a building in our community for any reason. So that's number one. Second, safety risk is the traffic. I believe that traffic study, what also, I agree with John Fox, that was an invalid traffic study. It does not take into consideration the real issues in our community, which the road, I live on Woodland Road, that road needs to be studied all the way from Milburn Avenue up to Chatham Road. There are many, many little kids walking to school, riding bikes. There are people taking walks all the time. People walk in the roads because we do not have sidewalks until you get on one side, all the way up to Pine Terrace, on the other side, a block away from the development on Ridge Terrace. There are no sidewalks. Children are walking and riding bikes in the road. Additionally, you have older children learning to drive, not always very well. And there, if somebody really could study our neighborhood and not make up a study about, you know, one car waiting at the end of the road, but really come to the neighborhood, spend some time here, see what is going on, when the schools are back in session, see the traffic patterns, and then try to address it because there's going to be a lot of cars coming in through this development, going up and down Woodland Road. Okay, and the other thing is emergency vehicles will not be able to get up the road if you have all that traffic. You're going to have fire pits with fires, and you're going to need emergency vehicles to come up the road. You need to really know what you're doing when you're creating these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deborah Nevis. You're muted. We can see you, but you're just, yeah, there you go.
Okay, just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Deborah Nevis, N-E-V-A-S, 65 Noelwood Road, in Short Hills. I'd like to screen share. I have some pictures I'd like to show.
So we have not been doing screen shares?
I had an email exchange with Ms. Davit back at the end of March, and she said that it would be okay.
Okay. Then I will, I will permit it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Stewart Hartshorn set out to develop Short Hills in 1874 as a planned community, quote, "where natural beauty would not be destroyed by real estate developments," close quote. While the Silverman property is not designated as such, it sits adjacent to buildings on Chatham Road that comprise Short Hills Village and are being considered for historic designation and across the train tracks from the Short Hills Park Historic District, originally designed and built by Mr. Hartshorn. The building design proposed tonight by Silverman does not take into account any of the historic elements of the surrounding neighborhood. This is a picture of the design. Their proposed development for Woodland Road looks like many other developments they have built, excepting one. Their property at 374 North Maple in Bernardsville, New Jersey, is in close proximity to the Grain House and Van Doren's Mill, historic buildings dating back to the 18th century. Their design and construction of the office at Bernards takes into account the historic nature of the Grain House and the Mill. It appears that when held to a historic standard by a local municipality, Silverman will accommodate. Neighbors have been opposed to the Chatham Road development from the beginning. Opposition has been based solely on its inappropriate size, density, and design for this neighborhood. The neighbors would like to see a redesign of its exterior so that it looks like it belongs. A local architect has come up with a different exterior design, more in keeping with the neighborhood. A reworked design could serve as an historically appropriate bookend to the historic designation of the Short Hills Village buildings, which were deemed to have high historic integrity and rarity by a 2008 historic structure inventory update. The neighbors made these proposed redesigns available to Silverman representatives last year. They demonstrated a lack of interest in them. Here are those designs. As you can see, they take into account both the elements that relate to the Tudor-style retail down the street as well as the Tudor and eclectic-style homes in the historic neighborhood nearby.
Ready second.
Okay. From section 5A of the settlement agreement, the parties acknowledge that the aesthetic appearance and appeal of the development from the adjoining streets and properties, including specifically all facades, constitute significant areas of concern for the township and the neighborhood. My understanding is that you, the planning board, have a say in the look of this development, indeed that it is part of your mandate based on goal 1, objective 101 of the 2018 revised master plan, quote, "to protect the character of established residential neighborhoods," close quote. I ask that you please exercise your powers in regard to upholding the master plan in the settlement agreement and ask the developer to uphold a historic standard and redesign the structure so that it lessens neighborhood concerns and is in keeping with its historic nature, with the historic nature of the area, just as Silverman did in Bernardsville. Mr. Minno, the applicant's architect, stated during his January 20 testimony that they are nowhere near being done designing this building because he presented only a concept plan. Now is the time for redesign. While we cannot stop Silverman from building on the property it owns, we should be able to ensure that the building in our X maintains the historic integrity of the neighborhood. Remember Stuart Hartshorn's commitment to protecting local beauty for real estate development, and remember your own 2018 master plan goal to protect the character of established neighborhoods. I can't think of a more established or deserving neighborhood than this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Tom Herbertson.
If you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight's zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Herbertson. My address is 76 Oakview Terrace, Short Hills. My first point is the application before the board is deficient and must be denied because the township ordinance in the settlement agreement make no specific mention of and do not permit rooftop decks, fire pits, or barbecues. At the planning board meeting on September 4, 2019, at the 1:15 mark, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Bear discussed the vigorous negotiations and specific details that went into the township ordinance and the settlement agreement. They concluded that these documents were very extensive and detailed and, quote-unquote, "locked in" the developer to the terms of the ordinance and the settlement agreement. Neither of these documents discuss or permit rooftop decks, fire pits, or barbecues. Similarly, Mr. Phillips' planners' review letter dated September 8, 2020 makes no mention of and does not permit rooftop decks, fire pits, or barbecues. In addition, the settlement agreement itself states that it consists of the entire agreement between the parties and cannot be changed or modified. So these rooftop decks, these fire pits, and these barbecues that first showed up in the applicant's drawings and plans just several months ago are not properly before this board and cannot be approved. My second point is that the application is deficient and must be denied because the issue of moving vans full of furniture and personal possessions, delivery vans like Amazon, and medical transport vehicles full of Summit Medical patients, where they will park has never been resolved. The curb cut into the sidewalk along Woodland Road is not acceptable or legal under special zoning ordinance 2542-19. Section 606.4.9, sub C1, the ordinance specifically requires off-street parking within the building and prohibits service parking upon completion of all required development components. In addition, the curb cut would be illegal because it would be in a no-parking zone along Woodland Road. The curb cut on the sidewalk also negatively affects pedestrians, including many children who walk and ride their bikes on the sidewalk, and this has never been resolved. As this curb cut is illegal, the application- As this curb cut is illegal, the application again must be denied. Finally, at the last planning board meeting several weeks ago, Jorge Master Pietro had the planner put up the slide of the aerial view of the site. And a picture really was worth a thousand words. You could see with your own eyes the massive footprint of this new building, how it was double and triple and quadruple the size of the surrounding homes and businesses. It clearly is not customary or ordinary in the surrounding neighborhood. And again, for these reasons, the application should be denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herbertson. Sanjeev, I see you have your hand raised.
Did you have a question before we have our?
Mr. Herbertson just said there is some law that you cannot have outside parking after the building is done. Is that a law in our zoning code or just wanted clarification there?
Eileen, did you hear what the statement was? And do you know, I'm asking Eileen because she's our zoning board secretary. So we're fortunate we have her.
I don't know the answer to that. That's a, that's a traffic ordinance issue.
Sorry?
It's a, it's a traffic ordinance. It's a police regulation that the township would adopt. So I think that's what Eileen's looking at to see if there's a no parking area on Woodland Road from Chatham Road to some.
And we, and we can continue this whenever she has an answer. That's fine.
Thank you. I appreciate, yeah, raising them, and I think we will look into it. Mr. Kimmel, you're with us and we can see you and hopefully hear you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Wait, wait, just raise your, wait, wait, wait. Just raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the Zoom hearing?
Yes, I do.
Just keep your voice up so we can hear you. Your name and address for the record.
Stanford Kimmels, St. Briarwood Drive, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm speaking on behalf of myself and as a member of the Board of Directors of the Short Hills Association, the township oldest civic association. We oppose the application of the Silverman Group for certain approval of its proposed development at Chatham and Woodland Road in the heart of the historic Short Hills Village. First, it is noteworthy that we find ourselves in a situation in which the imposing size and scale of the proposed sixty-two unit multifamily building is indisputably incompatible with the buildings and settings in Short Hills, which it is geographically proximate. Indeed, it is probably incompatible with the long-established character of the Glenwood neighborhood. Although the inclusion of an affordable housing in a community is a constitutionally mandated goal, it should not follow the developer can and has been done here. He's upon the mandate to denigrate the surrounding neighborhood and the residential character of the community. There are better ways to meet Melbourne's affordable housing obligations. We are asking the board not to compound the problem. The application has failed to adequately address traffic flow and safety around the proposed building. Design of the building's motor vehicle entrances and exits, which will be used by tenants, their visitors, summit medical group patients, and personnel, fails to ensure the safety of the children and the other pedestrians who will be traversing the area. After the COVID crisis is over and commuter traffic returns to its normal volume, volume which was not calculated appropriately by the applicant's traffic engineer, who did his study in July of two thousand nineteen. The mix of pedestrians, including young, school-aged children who attend the Glenwood School, traffic rushing for parking spaces at the Short Hills train station, and trucks loading or unloading around the building will create dangerous conditions, foreseeably resulting auto accidents and pedestrian injuries. The building's restricted views and obstructed walkways coupled with cars turning into or leaving its garages will make the area ripe for accidents. Nothing proffered by the developer satisfactorily resolves this unacceptable, unacceptable safety hazard. The proposed roof deck, which is not addressed in the settlement agreement nor in the concept plan, is likely to become a significant nuisance, resulting in disruptive and annoying neighborhood noise, which may well require the involvement of township law enforcement personnel to resolve and a lack of supervision of the rooftop activities of non-resident building management employees for enforcement of necessary use restrictions and potential fire hazards. Indeed, the applicant's witnesses and attorney were openly dismissive of these legitimate concerns expressed by neighborhood residents during the hearing, naively suggesting that tenants paying four to seven thousand per month in rent would not indulge in inconsiderate or dangerous behavior. A rooftop deck in this area should be rejected by the planning board. Third, permitting a rooftop deck in this quiet residential area will set a precedent for permitting future development projects in similar quiet residential areas of the township to include this incompatible urban feature. Short Hills is not Jersey City, Hoboken, or Morris. We urge the planning board to vote no on this application. We ask that you respect a resident's desire to continue to maintain the suburban character and residential attributes that induced us to choose Short Hills as our home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Okay, Mary McNabb, you should be with us.
Okay. Here I am.
Hi, hi, Mary. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Mary McNabb, Nine Park Circle, Short Hills.
Thank you.
I'm a former member of the Township Committee on the Planning Board, just for reference, because it's been a while. I call your attention to your duty to protect the character of our established neighborhoods as written in our master plan. So I urge you to deny the request for rooftop decks. Noise control was a major issue in these hearings, but the applicant failed to provide an expert witness to answer our questions. Residents were concerned about their right to peace and quiet. They were concerned about disruption of the tranquility of the neighborhood and about devaluation of our quality of life. Party noise and constant thumping from amplified sound is also a health hazard. It can cause stress, anxiety, depression, and sleep disturbances. The applicant told us, "You're on your own. Call the police." Rooftop decks are found in urban areas where a builder has minimal ground level open space, which brings me to a potential greater concern. If you approve this rooftop party structure that is found in urban settings, you move our community away from greener and healthier residential neighborhoods to an unwanted urban model found in a transit village. It signals a welcome for more rental apartment complexes with even more urban amenities and increased infrastructure demands. Certain criteria, such as the expanded special improvement district that now includes Chatham Road, have already been set in place. Transit village designation would bring more crowded trains and increase traffic. Public safety and infrastructure issues will strain our resources and permanently alter our town. You would also endanger the area that extends from the arboretum past the Short Hills train station that has historic significance within the fabric of our community. I strongly urge you to follow our master plan and protect our established neighborhoods by rejecting the rooftop deck application.
Thank you. Next member of the public is Mr. Feld.
Hello.
Good evening. We can hear you, but we can't yet see you.
I keep on hitting my start video and.
Yep, we got you.
Just, just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeffrey Feld, F-E-L-D. I live at eleven Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I am a licensed attorney, authorized to practice law in the state of New Jersey. Prior several hearings ago, I do, did submit a letter to the planning board that was directed not to be distributed to the members of the planning board. I do not sit on the Environmental Commission. I do not sit on the Historical Preservation Commission. I do not understand why my letter was not submitted. My real concern tonight is the decisions that you do make, especially regarding rooftop decks, LEED certifications, electric car chargers, the conversion, den conversion prohibitions will affect other projects that we know are online. Unfortunately, the planning board has been put in a bad situation, not that one that they caused. The Township Committee has failed to comply with state best practices. It's failed to adopt a best practice inventory inclusionary zoning ordinance, which is being required in the fair share housing litigation by the state entity. I too believe that certain decisions need to be made. The rooftop decks were not part of the settlement. They should not be approved. However, certain conditions, such as LEED certifications, the electrical charging stations, I agree with everyone. The world has changed. We have a new president. He's imposed new standards. I'm really very concerned because at the last meeting, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Steinberg asked Mr. Buzek to deliver an opinion as to the case cited by the applicant and help the board know the standards for what is a customary accessory use. I have not heard a response to Mr. Steinberg's question, which I think many of the planning board members wanted guidance. And I think if we had had, as a citizen, the benefit of Mr. Buzek's advice, we might have altered some of our comments tonight. But there's a hole here. Mr. Steinberg asked a question of the planning board attorney.
Thirty seconds.
The planning board attorney has not responded. That question is guiding most of the objections and opposition you're hearing tonight regarding the rooftop decks. You've known my position. I've been publishing on various websites. But today, we have to be very careful because you're setting precedent for the future of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. Susan Blackburn. Good evening. You're, you are muted.
Unmute, unmute yourself. Raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Susan Blackburn, eleven Inwood Road, Short Hills, New Jersey. I want to correct a rumor that I think may be going around. And it has to do with the original petition of the Summit Medical Group for a variance. There was one meeting at which I attended. People asked questions. Dr. Tansey spoke for the Summit Medical Group. They never returned after that. They, I don't know if they withdrew their petition for a variance, but they never pursued it. Shortly afterwards, we had all the issues of two thousand eight and the real estate upheavals of the time. I just also want to state, you know, to the best of my knowledge, that the Silverman Group never reached out to the community. We, I think everyone here understands that the people that live and own property close to this development are going to suffer in many, many ways. And some of the, and compensation, discussion, no, it never occurred. And I just want to testify to that. And if there's anybody that can say that it did happen with the community, I would be happy to find out differently because the opposition that's so vehement tonight has to do with the attitude and the track record of the group that is building this complex because the credibility is shredded as far as I'm concerned because questions I've asked, I've heard contradictory answers within one sentence. So we're talking about credibility, disregard for the community, and spreading possible, there are false, there's a false institutional history here, which I would like to correct. Summit Medical Group applied for a variance. Questions were asked at the hearing. They never returned to continue the variance. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the comments. Mr. Hildner.
If you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Tom Hildner, H-I-L-D-N-E-R, ten X Road, Short Hills, New Jersey. Good evening, everybody. The application, which now includes the rooftop decks, has been mentioned before, is not consistent with the concept plan, which is Exhibit B to the settlement agreement, as specifically agreed and required by section four D, page six of the settlement agreement, nor is it consistent with the revised ordinance. Since the deck now includes, since the deck was not included, decks were not included in the concept plan, they should not be approved as a matter of law. It shouldn't have to go any further than that. However, based on the last hearing, it appears the applicant is claiming that this is, this deck is an accessory use. Section six oh six point four point one C of the ordinance deals with accessory uses. Section E two defines an accessory use as one customarily incidental to one or more of the permitted principal uses. One of the two permitted principal uses stated in the ordinance is residential apartments. The other is medical offices. The deck is clearly not customarily incidental to that. Neither is it customarily incidental to the proposed residential apartments in Short Hills. The fact that one can find a rooftop deck in a given apartment building in Hoboken, Jersey City, South Orange, Maristown, Maplewood, or Montclair is not determinative. The location of these alleged decks are in substantially urban-type or city environments in these municipalities. A rooftop deck in Glenwood is incompatible with the neighborhood's character, setting, and residence. It is incompatible with a quiet suburban historic community sought to be preserved by our master plan. The deck approved by the board for a project at the former Wells Fargo Center, as mentioned in the last hearing in Melbourne, is for a building in an area of Melbourne totally distinct in character from the historic area of Woodland and Chatham Roads. It is not precedential. In addition, the deck will bring with it a host of problems that have already been discussed related to the absence of non-resident management, which cannot be permitted, and inability to practically enforce occupancy, noise, lighting, fire hazards, lighting limitations, hours of use, potential alcohol abuse, fire safety, and others that have been discussed. Mention was just made about the PT and L case that was decided in nineteen seventy-eight. And we have had no opinion about that said. However, I agree with the previous speaker who reviewed the case law subsequent to that and how showed, I think, quite clearly that it is not dispositive in this case. A rooftop deck is not a customary incidental use in historic area like Glenwood, specifically the area in which the intersection of Woodland and Chatham Roads is located. The deck does not become customary. Pardon me? I didn't hear you.
But you can finish the thought that you're in the middle of your sentence.
As the applicant claims, without proof that there are a few buildings in the general geographic area of Melbourne. that there are a few buildings in the general geographic area of Milburn that have decks, the burden of proof in this case is on the applicant. The applicant with vague references to decks and other towns and other places, no specifics, no pictures, nothing, is insufficient proof. And I submit that even if you get to this issue as raised by the applicant, they have not met their burden of proof. Therefore, let's not make Short Hills like Maristown, Montclair, Maplewood, where the where the where the alleged buildings are on places like Springfield Avenue, South Orange Avenue, in the heart of Maristown, Bloomfield Avenue. None of that is any remotely like the area that we're talking about in this application. Let's not make the Woodland and Chatham Roads area like those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hildner. Ms. Schofield should be with us.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Eileen Schofield, 76 Oakview Terrace, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Two wrongs don't make a right. The township committee made a mistake. Just don't rubber stamp their mistake. We should never be in this position with this huge four-story apartment building to loom over our residential neighborhood. Stuart Hartron planned the Short Hills portion of Milburn as one of America's first planned communities. As a community to promote the building of tasteful and substantial homes, free as possible from the blight of commercial surroundings. Until this time, it appeared that this vision was adhered to. But now it looks like Short Hills is in play to hungry developers. What will be your mark next? Greenwood Gardens, Old Short Hills Park, or maybe the Oakley Track? This four-story apartment building is not in keeping with the master plan. Your board voted that this was true. It will forever damage the landscape of this Short Hills community, and it will forever ruin my neighborhood. You audacity of using 12 affordable housing units to build this monstrosity. It's a terrible precedent. Shame on the developer and shame on our township. But you can stop this. You've asked probing questions, many of which have never been answered. You've seen conflicting testimony from the experts, most pushing your questions to the next guy, but there was never a next guy, and they hoped you'd forget your questions. Also, by allowing this building, as well as a roof deck adjacent to the arboretum, the planning board in Milburn Township would be harming the adjacent arboretum, which they own and are charged to protect as required in their deed from Cora Hartron's estate. If the township should fail or neglect to maintain it for the uses and purposes under Cora's will, then the land will be forfeited to the Essex County Park Commission. Please don't jeopardize this beautiful arboretum and force it to go to Essex County. In addition, this desk should not be considered an accessory use. And this matter can be distinguished from the case that the developer's attorney presented at the last hearing. As an attorney, I was shocked that the developer's attorney was allowed, without any objection by your counsel, to lead his witness on the record and take this board's understanding of accessory use. This deck is not customary in Short Hills, and the current case law dictates that it's very important to take into consideration the surrounding area. This is not an accessory use. If you must approve anything, approve Phase One with no party decks and don't approve Phase Two. Put all the 12 low-income units into Phase One, as well as Summit Medical Group, who's running this show, and put Phase Two area in a land trust for the township to preserve the arboretum and open space. This higher parcel is only a little more than an acre of land, which the developer wants to cover completely with buildings and underground parking. This would be an environmental nightmare and will reap a huge monetary benefit for the developer. The settlement agreement has given the developer all that he's asked for, and now he wants even more to add a party deck. Please don't give him more. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Okay. Jean, you should be with us. Great.
Okay, just raise raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Dean Pasternak, 342 Hobart Avenue. I just want to follow from the two previous commentators. Mr. Steinberg was asked for an opinion on case law that was cited by Mr. Buzak at the last meeting. Could that be shared with members of the public? That's my question. Can be answered later. We have heard one neighbor after another tonight speak from their hearts and also their very sharp minds. We are very fortunate to have extraordinary residents deeply in the past, present, and future of this town. I feel proud. At the same time, I feel extremely disappointed. I implore each of you generous volunteers, appointed board members, to listen, to really listen, consider, and not be afraid to act, as some of you have shown already, as judges of the overall impact on Milburn Short Hills of this project. The overarching issue with this board, the township committee, and the hearing process of this application, from my observations of attending all these meetings, is a very real lack of transparency with members of the public. I also see that statutes are not being followed in an impactful way. There has been a lack of respect for the public and residents' wishes within the confines of our master plan and its amendments. This project skirted and avoided redevelopment law because the township committee and others knew the community would never support that. So instead, the township committee did a spot zoning ordinance, which was never explained to the public. Other townships tell members of the public what all conditions are upfront, not so in this situation and others by the township committee or this land use board. They left the language in the ordinance vague as to accessory uses and allowable conditions, purposely perhaps. This opened the door for interpretation, as this developer and their attorney have attempted. Don't fall for it. Do the legal correct thing and push back on rooftop decks bait and switch design, as we heard about from Margaret Hickey tonight. Conflicts of interest abound after listening to witness testimony amongst other bits of information that I've gleaned. Board member Bear tonight tried to stop the HPC from providing testimony. This is appalling from a point of view of the public. The last meeting, we heard the applicant's planner more or less admit that at a fair share hearing in front of Judge Gardner, referred to this project as Mr. Phillips, our planner's baby. What is this, other than a red flag of conflict? We deserve to know why the Environmental Commission Chair, who also sits on the township's litigation committee, did not provide testimony on behalf of the Environmental Commission. Was she told not to? I heard she was told that. How much more litigation can this township take? Leads vote no until comprehensive list of conditions are attached to any approval of this application. Lead compliance, no rooftop decks, arboretum impacts being mitigated, redesigning, keeping with the Historic Preservation Commission testimony tonight, solutions that address environmental safety and traffic concerns so eloquently presented by many members of the public and members of this board. Thank you for listening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pasternak. Okay, next we have Ann Levinson. Oh, you you just muted yourself. You had been unmuted. Ann, I'm not sure if you can hear us. You you went from unmuted to muted. So if you could reverse that so we could hear you. Yeah, that's we can hear you now.
Yes. Yes.
Can you turn on your video? Yeah. Are you are you turning on the video?
Yes.
It looks like you might have turned it on, but is there something covering your camera or no?
Sort of freezing.
Okay.
It's very slow.
Yeah.
May I just continue?
Um, yeah, I think because she's attempting to, or can we still have her sworn in?
Yeah, if you I can't see if she's raising her right hand. I'll state her word for it, I guess. Raise your right hand.
If I if I if I may ask Mr. Buzak for a ruling on whether a witness who were not able to see is legally able to testify.
Now, you're muted, Ms. Levinson.
Under the emergency rules that the DCA has provided, they have said both audio and video are required if one is going to testify. The difficulty with that is that if people only have access to a phone line or a landline that does not have video, the regulations have not taken that into account. So I'm going to, we haven't, this is the first one that we've had here. I think everyone else has so far been on video, and I don't know if Ms. Levinson is unable to Ms. Levinson, are you on a on a computer?
I'm on a Zoom. I'm on a Zoom. However, it's 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 team chat has affected my my Zoom. I'm on the phone and yeah.
There you go. Okay, you're there. We can see you.
I think she's frozen.
Oh.
It's possible that by having her camera on, it's reducing bandwidth. Okay. Hopefully, we can get her sworn in. But if not, I know we have another member of the public who had reached out to say that she will not have video. And so, Ed, I don't know if you had finished that thought, but if it was going in the direction of permitting it, if they have
I think the board will just have to judge the credibility of the witness without having to see them under those circumstances.
I mean, if I may, Madam Chair, obviously, the board will defer to Mr. Buzak's advice. But I do want to make an objection for the record that it would be appropriate for the board to follow the rules set forth by the state with regard to both audio and visual requirements for testimony. But I understand that the chair will conduct the meeting based on the advice of counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in the meantime, it does look like Ms. Levinson has off, so hopefully she can rejoin. I think we had success with that before with another participant. So let's move on to the next commenter, and hopefully we can return. Saran Tanalian. I'm sorry for mispronouncing it.
No problem at all.
Are you able to turn your camera on?
I can. Yes, thank you.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Sarant Millian, 55 Highland Avenue, Short Hills.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm a newcomer to the town and to this community. I so just like to offer some perspectives from a new home buyer. When looking at various towns around the area, we looked at Summit, Maplewood, Montclair. These towns have developed fairly thriving downtown areas around their respective train stations, inclusive of retail, dining, commercial, and yes, multifamily housing. They're adapting to changing preferences by home buyers towards walkable downtowns and away from malls and strip malls. They have found the right balance between green spaces, diverse housing, and the convenience of having nearby commercial offerings. Short Hills hasn't quite kept pace with that, albeit a very much a lovely community and why we chose to come to this town. The towns I've listed have enjoyed 10 to 30% increase in home prices over the past five years based on Zillow data. Based on the same metric, Short Hills is at 8% growth in home prices. Is this development perfect in every way? No, it's not. But I do think it's a step in the right direction. Thank you again for your time. Take care.
Thank you, Ms. Millian. Okay, Olga Ulatina. Olga, if you're able to unmute yourself. There we go. Looks like you're joining.
Hello?
We can hear you, and we can't yet see you, but it looks like you did the same thing. Tried to turn on your camera.
Oh, let me see.
Now, it looks like you had done it correctly, but
My camera is on. Camera is on.
Yeah.
It's a it's a camera being blocked. Sometimes there's a slide over the camera, like a cover on the top of it.
No. But no, everything everything looks fine.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
No, maybe you have another application with the camera on. So maybe that's the situation. You cannot have two applications with a camera on, so maybe you have another one on.
I'm checking. I don't have anything. No, everything is closed. Start my video. I clicked it again.
Yeah, we can see. It looks like it changes the the way you're displayed, but we're just not it's just a black. Is your camera facing towards you?
Yes.
That happened to me once, and Madam Chair suggested to get on the phone, and I was able to get on that way. And then later on, figured out what was wrong. So if you have a phone, you could get on there.
Hmm. I have a phone, and let me just try one more time. You check on the settings. I have a camera. I don't want to hold anybody. No, everything's fine. Okay, so go back to next speaker, and I'll try on the phone now. You can skip and go to next one, and I'll wait. I'll be next.
Okay, okay. Thank you for trying to come in another way. Thank you. Eileen, to that end, I wanted to circle back to Elaine Becker, who I know is going to be trying to join. Is it possible to bring her in? I know she doesn't have her hand raised, but I know she was going to try to use the star six command. I just want to make sure we don't inadvertently ignore her. So Elaine, are you hearing me? If you can unmute yourself, if you know how to do that. Elaine, there I don't I'm not sure if you're just calling in from your phone and have a mute button or are on the Zoom application.
I mean, I there are two two phone calls, but I don't know.
Yeah, no, I don't. Oh, Elaine, are you there? It looks like you've unmuted. Okay. Did the other woman who was just with us, Olga, rejoin via phone? Just want to try to not lose anybody's. If anybody else wanted to make a public comment.
Her name is BB Share, who I know we already heard. Her hand is raised again.
We're only having each person speak one time tonight.
I do see Olga is back in the attendees. I will bring her over.
Sure, let's try that.
If it works this time. I'll leave Elaine here, okay?
That's all I think I remember. There was one time, last time also, BB Share had two people separate talking on the same phone.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay, thanks. We can check after. So Olga, you should be back with us. Hi. Now we're not hearing you, or I'm not hearing. No, we're not hearing you, or I'm not hearing you.
All right.
Olga, can you try speaking again?
Uh, hello?
Yes. Okay, we're not able to see you, but I, I think, um, given what we just discussed and the fact that you are trying your hardest, um, I, I, I'm, I think it's appropriate to move forward and allow her to testify.
Thank you so much, because I agree.
Wait, 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 got to square you in first, and she is choppy, though.
Yeah, Olga, if you're able to get anywhere, or maybe try turning the camera off to just save bandwidth now, because that doesn't seem to be working, but your, yeah, your voice is breaking a bit. Okay, let's try him.
You, you need to raise your right hand, we'll take your word for it, that you're raising your right hand. Is, is your right hand raised?
I raised it, and yes, raised.
Okay, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and your ID, just spelling your name, please.
Uh, to overlook there is Short Hills.
Just spell your name.
It all, you is, in a, L, I, I, E, N, A.
Okay, go ahead, it is a little bit difficult to hear you, but, but go, we are getting most of what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's, it's difficult for me, though.
Yeah.
That's.
Okay, so. All right, Olga, let's begin, if, if our stenographer is not able to comprehend you and understand, then Eric, just speak up and we'll have to have her pause.
Hmm, okay, um, I wrote a letter to Milburn Environmental Commission regarding the woodland project and expressed my environmental thoughts. And it is posted on page.com, and if you're interested, please feel free to read it. But right now, I want to talk about another issue with woodland, all new projects coming to this area. Dear Planning Board, why are you going against your own master plan? Your goal number one, in a book, and you.
I can't hear what she's saying.
Okay, Olga, I'm sorry, we'll have to pause it, so we heard the beginning when you stated about a letter, but now you, you've, unfortunately, we're not able to hear you, um. Uh, so I apologize, we're gonna have to ask you this.
If I move around the house, I'll try again, uh, later, last one, I'll, I'll wait for everybody to testify.
Okay, wherever you are right now, you just started coming in clear, so why don't you keep going, if you can.
Okay, so, um, but right now, I want to talk about another issue with woodland and new projects coming to this area, and all new projects. Dear Planning Board, are you going against your own master plan? Your goal number one, quote, encourage appropriate land uses that promote the character of the town as a small suburb of the highest quality. Your objective number one, quote, protect the character of established residential neighborhoods and encourage land use and development at an appropriate scale and density. The current infrastructure doesn't even support the existing amount of cars making their way through the town at certain hours. And we're not even fully open. Pre-COVID, there was heavy traffic on Short Hills Avenue, Milburn Avenue, Main Street, Access Street, Balthus Road, Road on weekdays, morning hours before school and work, after school hours at 3:00 PM, and again, starting about 4:30 PM. How are you going to deal with additional hundreds of cars that are coming with Springfield Development and two Milburn Developments? Milburn and Springfield combined, I expect into add about 400 units, right? Don't you think that we should always consider worst-case scenario and anticipate two cars per unit? About 800 additional cars in the area? Have you or builders, experts considered it? As I recall, the expert testified on a separate project and where that will affect the already awful traffic. They testified it will be the same. Certainly, logic says it has to be more awful. Do you think Milburn Steel will be small suburb of the highest quality? It is going to be a disaster and there will be no way to fix it. You can spend taxpayers' money on flexible parking, then spend more money to change it back. You can direct, redirect traffic, but you can't take the building down easily. Why don't you prepare infrastructure first to support your developments if they are already, if they are really necessary? In a conclusion, I think those allowing 85 woodland project to proceed did not follow master plan and committing immoral crime against this town, especially in regards of building right next to Arboretum, next to the birds sanctuary. I think those who allow this to happen need to resign from township committee, environmental commission, and certainly from the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ulatina. Um, okay, so, okay, you're bringing in Jean Cosgrove, and Eileen, based on, um, what Sanji just mentioned, um, we can bring in BB next, just in case there's somebody else. Um, Jean, you should be with us and you should be able to unmute and, uh.
Okay, I did.
Great, okay, we can't see you yet.
We should.
I'll just wait, maybe it'll pop right up.
Oh, it's asking to start my video, okay, well. There I am.
Okay, you would just raise your right hand, please. You swear from testimony you're about to give in tonight's, uh, Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
You say your name and address for the record.
Uh, Jean Cosgrove, 99 Opium Terrace.
Thank you.
Okay, the developer's site plan application must be denied since it is inconsistent with the zoning ordinance and concept plans in the settlement agreement. It should be noted that the review of the developer's application by the town's experts took place after the addition of the rooftop decks. The concept plans, Exhibit B in the settlement agreement do not contain rooftop decks. Attorney Bouzak at the March 31st special meeting read from subsection, read from Article 5, Subsection A of the settlement agreement. The parties acknowledged that the aesthetic appearance and appeal of the development from adjoining streets and properties constitute significant areas of concern for the township and the neighborhood. Therefore, it is essential, it is an essential and significant element of this agreement that any development application presented to the planning board shall be consistent with concept in land Exhibit B and consistent with the ordinance. Only reasonable de minimis bulk variances and certain waivers are allowed. Excuse me, the concept plan does not show rooftop decks or grills or fire pits. The concept plan depicts what was presented to the public by Paul Phillips and the town's attorneys. That was, the rooftop deck is for rooftop mechanical equipment and the setbacks for softening the bulk and height. There were to be no surprises. The Planning Board's Master Plan Evaluation of 2018 recommends residential zones, including the multifamily zone, be preserved and protected to avoid development that is out of sync with the underlying zoning and the neighborhood character. None of our existing multifamily residences have rooftop decks, so it's out of sync and not customarily associated with multifamily dwellings. It's notable that the downtown Wells Fargo site, as part of its agreement, gets a deck on top of its garage, just as this developer got a courtyard. The more recent Tannis case has added a second factor you must consider when deciding whether rooftop decks are an accessory use customarily associated with multifamily dwellings. You must also consider the impact of the use on the town's zoning plan and the surrounding neighborhood. Rooftop decks would have a deleterious, uh, impact on the arboretum and the surrounding residential area. There's the fire safety concern for the arboretum, as well as the impact of the noise and smoke with no practical means of controlling rooftop activities, all interfering with the public's expected quiet enjoyment of the arboretum and our tranquil surrounding neighborhood. I urge you to deny the application as it is inconsistent with the zoning ordinance and concept plan.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, so, uh, BB, you're back, hi, you're muted, though. BB, you're on mute.
Okay, I, I don't want to go forward under false pretenses. Just one second, although my, just wait a minute, although my husband would cede his time to me, I was really, I really raised my hand to answer the question that was asked about the curb.
Chair, this is not.
Yeah, BB, if, if, I, I appreciate it, but we're, we're.
Okay, I know, and, and, and I would like to say that I do not think that it was proper to limit the comments to such a short.
Thank you, okay, Eileen, thank you. I'm sorry, but, but, thank you, we're just, we just didn't know if you had somebody else providing your comment.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
That's okay, it's, it was fine, um, okay, Elaine, we're gonna try one more time, are you with us, Elaine Becker? Okay, um, Peter Van Sant, you should be, uh, with us, you can unmute and, yeah, we can see you now. You're.
Just raise your right hand, please, sir.
Yes.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
It's Peter Van Sant, 322 Taylor Road South in Short Hills. I'm, uh, talking to the board tonight from, uh, Medina, Washington, I'm out here visiting my, uh, my ill mother, but this is an issue that you have heard from so many eloquent, uh, residents, of how important this is to us to maintain the quality of our neighborhood, uh, the peace of, of the arboretum, and, uh, my, my thought is just this. If someone came to any of the board members' neighborhoods and said, "We would like to put a rooftop party deck on the house across the street from yours." There is not a person on this board who would approve such an abomination, because it doesn't fit. And the fact that this came in at the last moment, uh, snuck in, which was, um, in my opinion unethical and, and disrespectful to the community, which overwhelmingly has opposed this project, and particularly the, the party decks. I just ask each of you to look into your heart, to, to please represent us, we're counting on you, and to turn down, uh, that request, which would, uh, become an eyesore, an environmental, um, eyesore, and also just disrupt the entire rhythm and atmosphere of our community. And so, that's all I wanted to say to the board members tonight, is do what you would do for your own neighborhood, for your own neighbors and for yourselves. Please do for us, and that's what I ask, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, hope your mom as well.
Thank you.
Um, Muffin Muller?
Yes, that is me, and I hope I'm coming in.
Okay, just, just raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Muffin Muller, and I live at 5 Burnside Drive, Short Hills, New Jersey, 07078.
And now you can.
Okay, thank you, okay, I just wanted to reiterate what everyone has said so eloquently and wonderful. I grew up in town, I literally grew up running down Chatham Road, I have five kids and they all grew up running down Chatham Road and just listening to all of this and, um, you know, definitely very, very concerned, um, as someone who is so intimately acquainted with this, you know, incredible town is, um, you know, very, very concerned about traffic issues and safety issues and fire issues and just feeling so terrible for people who will be affected by these rooftop decks. Um, I just really ask for the consideration of the board to, um, really just turn down, um, you know, this whole plan, it's just out of keeping with the town and people come here for, um, you know, the uniqueness and the special, um, qualities of this town. Um, and I just really ask that you, um, really respect that and, um, you know, have the heart of Short Hills here and keep it, you know, what it's always been, which is always people wanting to return, like myself, or new people that are coming because it is walkable and it really is so special. Um, it's a great place to grow up, so I really please ask from the heart that you, um, that you all, you know, take all that into consideration and thank you so much, really appreciate, you know, all your volunteering, so have a great night, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, anybody else, please raise your hand if you additionally have a comment or public testimony you'd like to make tonight. Okay. Was there anybody who was on that didn't get to come back yet, or I think we got, no, it was the old one, we got her back, okay. Um. Thank you, okay, not seeing any further public commenters, uh, raising their hand. That is, that looks like it, um. Okay, so, we have a couple things, um, Ed, I know we have, so Jorge had, uh, reserved the right to sort of ask further questions.
We, we first need to close the public portion of the meeting, so we cut that out, so if, if you can either declare that as the chair, we can ask for a motion, but we need to close that off now.
I'm happy to declare that the public comment portion of this meeting is closed.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Actually, I was gonna turn to you and ask for, um, recommendation on, because I know Jorge mentioned he has additional, I guess, unanswered questions, I don't know that the, um, applicant has people here to respond or to be able to, uh, answer the questions, but maybe it's an opportunity to raise them so we can discuss how to, uh, get them answered.
Well, uh, I, I think that it's appropriate for the board to now discuss the application, I don't know if Mr. Lucino has any of his witnesses here, um, because their, their case had been completed, if I understand it, and, and maybe we should ask him that. Mr. Lucino, do you have any other witnesses or rebuttal witnesses? I assume the answer is no, but I want to make the record clear.
You assume correctly, Mr. Bouzak.
Okay, uh, so, uh, now it's time for the board's discussion and deliberation, if they have questions. It can be discussed, I'm sure that if, if it's a question for the applicant, which, which hopefully would have asked already when the witnesses were all here. Uh, we'll see how we'll handle that, but why don't we begin the, the discussions of the board?
Mr. Bouzak, do I make a summation at the end of the board deliberations?
It, it, it's up to, uh, the chair, we can do it now, uh, or we can wait until you hear the board's comments, uh, before they actually take any action, some then, uh, it's up to you, Mr. Lucino.
Well, I guess it would be appropriate to hear the board's, uh, comments, because there may be questions that I can address, uh, and include.
Prefer you do that, yeah.
Okay, good.
Um, and now I, I, you know, I close the session, but I see a member of the public has a question, so I don't know what we would do, um, and it's somebody who has already spoken and given public comment, so I think we, we don't reopen that.
I, I don't think we could do that, because what's, we'll just keep going.
Keep a lid on that can of worms, I apologize, but, uh, everybody has had their opportunities, okay, Mr. Steinberg, go ahead.
You need to unmute, Joe.
You're right, I was on mute. Let me start off. The rooftop decks are dead in the water. That's the end of that. Uh, they're not customary and incidental to, uh, residential units. And, uh, I think the case has been made out, in my mind, 10 times over, that they are dangerous and that any attempt by this board to impose conditions like thou shalt not. like thou shalt not, blah, 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 blah. And that the management shall have someone on on duty all the time, is micromanaging. The rooftop decks are finished, they're dead in the water. The case has been made out, in my mind, ten times over, that they are not part of the settlement. And that, so that leads me to a couple of other very interesting points. The most interesting of them all is whether the architecture of this project should be rejected by this board. I think that tonight, members of the public made a very persuasive argument. Especially the testimony of the architect and the member of the historic preservation, chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. That the architecture is not consistent with the neighborhood. And not consistent with the area of Short Hills that's impacted. So now, number three. I want to read to you, believe it or not, this was handed to the board members on September the eighth, two thousand twenty. So that was about a year and a half ago, pretty much.
September of two thousand twenty was about eight months.
I'm gonna read from is the report of the planner, our planner, to this board. And he says in part, "The applicant must verify whether facade lighting will be provided on both sides of the garage entrance on Woodland Road." That was never done. That was never done. Now, I have raised on prior occasions, issues about the entrances, the automobile entrances into the garage. And the parking garage, and we've heard testimony from people who live in the area about the fact that there's an elementary school right down the street, two blocks away. That kids walk and bicycle on that street. And I've raised issues about the entrances and how they're going to be engineered. And I want to say honestly, that I was greatly offended by the testimony that was presented by Mr. Dean. Where the applicant's attorney presented Mr. Dean, who came in and showed us a couple of pictures of garages, entrances in, I think, Jersey City. One and the other one somewhere else in Hudson County. And they made the case out, those pictures, for the problem that I see with the fact that this applicant has engineered everything else. But they haven't engineered the entrances to the garage, to the garage. Not a single one of those three entrances has been engineered. By engineered, I mean, they haven't shown us where the lights are, if they're going to be lights. They haven't shown us precisely what the sound is going to be like. And frankly, I was tremendously offended by the testimony of Mr. Dean. Who actually said at one point that I went out and did a study so that the board could understand what was available. That's not the way it works. I've presented many, many matters to planning boards and zoning boards over the course of my career. And you don't say to a board, "Here's a bunch of things, and you can select whatever you want." No, the applicant is the one who selects what they want done at these entrances to protect these little kids. They haven't done that. They presented a witness who said, "You could do this, 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 and this." And when it came to the sound, where some neighbors were concerned that the sound might be too great and might interfere with sleep late at night. Meaning, a car was coming out of a garage and a voice would say, "Car coming," or whatever. The witness actually said this. "We could talk to the manufacturer and find out if there's a way to cut back on the sound late at night." No, that's not the way it works. The board doesn't do that. You do it as the applicant, and you present to the board your proposal as to how to protect those kids walking and biking up that little street. Well, I want to tell you, I am embarrassed for the applicant. This was a poorly presented case, improperly presented, and presented insufficiently, to, at least from my point of view. My vote, if they insist on a vote on this particular application with what they presented to this board, my vote is no. No, 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 a thousand times no. This, this project is, I understand the problem that the board has. We're not free to just view this application as if it were something that came out of the sky. There is a, there was a lawsuit, the lawsuit was settled. And part of the settlement was that the applicant was going to have X number of affordable housing in this location. Well, look, I'm not a baby. I understand that when you have affordable units in your project, you need to make a profit somewhere else in the building. So that you can make up for the fact that you've got affordable units that are not going to be rented at rents that would be customary in the neighborhood. I understand that. But for somebody to come in here and tell me, "The units are going to be rented out for seven thousand a month," excuse me, seven thousand a month. I understand this is Short Hills. I've lived here for, excuse me, for forty-six years. So I think I know something about this town. But to tell me that in order to get my seven thousand dollars a month, I have to have a rooftop deck that has a you know, place for you to have parties and where you can have a you know, grill, your hot dogs and all the rest, that's a lot of nonsense. This is a bad application. Bad, bad, bad. And I would not vote for this in a million years. Enough.
Okay, thanks. On Dave?
Madam Chair, I just want to say one thing before, because I see it's late already.
Yeah.
And I just want to correct the record here. There were a couple of comments that were made by members of the public, and I know the board's aware of this. That we were, we, I was asked to report to the board regarding accessory uses. And there were allegations made that nothing was done. And I just want the record to reflect, and I know the board is obviously aware of it, that that is simply a false statement, and it's an uninformed statement. We provided the board with two legal memorandums regarding the issue of accessory uses and the standards that apply. We did not only utilize the case that the applicant utilized, we did our own independent research and provided the board with the benefit of all of that in summary form to give them a basis upon which to evaluate the issue as to whether or not the rooftop decks are customary and incidental and are accessory uses under our ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I do, I do acknowledge that it's getting late. I think I would like, I don't know if we're gonna get to the, the final coda. And the reason is because I don't know if any of the concerns that are remaining, that Jorge alluded to, and if anybody else has concerns, I want to make sure they're on the table. I know there have been, you know, questions from planning board members, which may, they may or may not be satisfactorily answered. And maybe it gives Mr. Inglisino or whomever applicant one more chance to say, "We provided our testimony." Or, you know, we can respond to those specific remaining outstanding items. So if we could, I guess, direct the conversation towards any of those in the next, you know, bit of discussion. If there's anything that's sort of outstanding that needs to be made to make a decision, I would encourage us to speak to those. Mr. Van Ayck?
Well, I still wanted to check with Ms. Devitt if she was able to find out.
And this is regarding the parking, or the?
That's right. Mr. Herbertson has talked about.
I checked through the RMF, the zone specifics, the RMFAH, and I did not see anything. I, I didn't hear what section he had referenced, but I did not see anything that that spoke to that. So I don't know if it was referring to a township ordinance or?
The only other place it would be, would be in the parking regulations of the township, where they'll set forth those streets upon which there's no parking, parking during certain hours. Those are obviously depicted by signs that are up to inform the public that they can't park here, or they're limited in parking and so forth. But it would be in the township code under the traffic section.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I hate to monopolize, but I, the question that came up about that in the cutout. The board had lots of problems with that. And my understanding was that Mr. Lanza Fama was going to come back and talk more about that cutout and talk and, and address some of the concerns that board members had. He never came back. At least that's my recollection.
Okay, I, right, I think there were some conversations of we could shift it further, regarding the questions about the like the turning rate, you know, if vehicles would be able to get into that.
Where, where is Mr. Lanza Fama? He never came back here.
Right, we haven't seen him back here yet. Okay.
That's all. One more thing, and that is that I was impressed with a lot of the testimony from the public tonight. And, and I think I said this before, and from the Historic Preservation Commission. That this project has not been designed in accordance with the neighborhood that it is by settlement got to be in. So I would hope that the applicant will decide to withdraw this application. Or at least come back at another meeting with different plans. No rooftop decks, et cetera, et cetera. And hope that they can get something past this board that is in keeping with the settlement agreement. But that's for the applicant to say.
Right, okay. And other members of the board who have any other outstanding questions or concerns or things that they feel have not been, not new questions, but yeah, Jorge.
No, when I said before that I have a few questions, at this point, I don't need any answer.
Okay.
And mine now is just comments. I don't need an answer right now, it's.
Understood, okay, great. I'm glad you clarified that. Okay. Ed, I look to you in terms of a recommendation. So would you, I, I don't know if, I mean, Jorge just mentioned he has more comments. I don't know if we're looking at having the board continue to deliberate, allowing Mr. Inglisino to include, you know, whether we can move to a vote. I know there's a lot of conditions or, you know, considerations to revisit, so.
Well, I think what we should do is we should have Mr. Inglisino provide his summation. He can address things that have already been raised, and then this way then at least we get that part done. I'm only working with the board as to where we go.
Madam Chair?
Please, Mr. Inglisino.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the applicant, Eighty-Five Woodland Road LLC. We want to thank the board, its professionals and staff for your participation in this application on this eighth meeting of this hearing. We appreciate your time and attention, and we appreciate the ability to collaborate on issues of concern to ensure that this project will, if not tonight, but will eventually be embraced by the community. As you know, this is an application for a mixed-use development consisting of sixty-two rental apartments. Of which twelve will be set aside for low and moderate income housing. That is fifty market rate units and twelve affordable units. The project also consists of ten thousand square feet of medical office, which will be initially occupied by Summit Medical Group. It is, in our view, incumbent upon the board to view this application within the context it is brought as an implementation of the township's and this board's obligation under its court-approved settlement agreement with the applicant dated September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. And I remind the board that the board is a signator, is a party, direct party to the settlement. As stated at the inception of these hearings, Article Three of the settlement agreement provides that the parties, and again, that includes the township as an entity. And it includes this board as an entity. Agree that the property is suitable, this is what the board agreed to. That the property is suitable and developable for this project. As those terms are defined under COA's second round rules. And while, and COA's second round rules have survived and have been quoted by the New Jersey State Supreme Court in that regard. The project is permitted, permitted under the zoning that was adopted by the governing body for the purpose of implementing the project. And as such, this is a conforming as-of-right development. The application accurately reflects the project agreed to by the parties as described and as illustrated in the settlement agreement, including and especially with respect to architecture. The settlement agreement, meaning this project, was heavily negotiated under the auspices of the court through the court's appointed special master. All parties at that time wanted certainty. My client wanted certainty so that it would be able to obtain site plan approval. And this board and the township wanted certainty because they didn't want the developer to promise one thing and propose another. Article Five of the settlement agreement provides in pertinent part, and I'm gonna read from it and quote from it. "The parties acknowledge that the aesthetic appearance and appeal of the development from the adjoining streets and properties, including specifically..." from the adjoining streets and properties, including specifically all facades, number of units, footprint and height of the buildings constitute significant areas of concern for the township and the neighborhood. Therefore, it is essential and significant element of this agreement that any development application presented to the planning board shall be consistent with the concept plan Exhibit B. Exhibit B specifically referenced in the settlement agreement and consistent with the ordinance Exhibit A, except for any reasonably de minimis bulk variances or waivers from its provisions resulting only from the detailed final engineering design of the residential development." When the expert testified tonight from the historic society, historic committee, testimony was that she believed it wasn't in character in the neighborhood, but she admitted under cross-examination that it was consistent with Exhibit B in the settlement agreement. No one can take a look at Exhibit B, which are pretty much the exact exhibits that were presented to this board of the project. This is what was agreed to. Whether it's in, whether it's in character with the neighborhood or not is completely irrelevant. Mr. Steinberg, I have great respect for you, but I could not disagree with you more as a matter of law. This contract, this settlement agreement is what governs. Exhibit B contains the architecture that was presented to this board and was agreed to by this board. Whether it's in character with the neighborhood is completely irrelevant and is certainly not a basis to deny the application because the fact is the developer presented a project, the project that was agreed to. Moreover, again, as I say, the architecture is illustrated as exhibits to the settlement agreement. These renderings are a material part of the settlement agreement. They were negotiated ad nauseam, they were negotiated with tremendous input from your professionals and they are reflected in this application. Please by some to change the project from what was agreed to in the settlement agreement are highly inappropriate and indeed improper for the board to act upon. We urge the board to disregard such pleas and comply with the settlement agreement. The board has reviewed the plans, read reports from your experts, heard testimony from the applicant's experts, asked questions and has otherwise been engaged in these hearings. And we appreciate that and we acknowledge that. You've been very attentive and you've asked very good questions. And your community should be proud of the job that you have done representing it. The applicant's experts were cross-examined by the board and the board's professionals and the public. The board heard testimony, exhaustive testimony, comprehensive testimony from the applicant civil engineer, Michael Lanza Fama, who testified as to the availability of utilities, riparian buffers, prior disturbance, demolition of existing structures, site plan, parking, stormwater management, grading, drainage, landscaping, lighting, rights of way and other relevant matters within his area of expertise. The board and its professionals vetted the plans and revisions were made with regard to the stairs, the landscaping, ramping and other engineering issues, which were all done in direct response to your questions and issues raised by your professionals. You heard testimony from the applicant's architect, Mr. Minno, with regard to the architectural aspects of this project. Mr. Minno provided numerous exhibits to demonstrate perspective from various points of the project, including from Woodland, Chatham Road and the Arboretum. Mr. Minno testified with regard to various aspects of the project, including recycling, trash management and numerous elements of lead standards that are incorporated into the project, including star energy appliances, utilization of recycled materials in building construction, rooftop gardens, mature species in landscape plan, et cetera. Mr. Minno also testified that the cost of obtaining lead certification is approximately two hundred thousand dollars. That was his testimony. That's just the cost to obtain the certification and does not include any of the lead-related costs of the project. As such, any attempt to impose, impose lead certification would be improper because among other things, it's not required and would be cost generative under applicable COA rules. We hope and we trust that the board acknowledges and appreciates the lead elements that the developer is providing as part of this inclusionary project. The applicant's planner, Michael Tobia, provided testimony that the rooftop deck is permitted as an accessory use. Mr. Tobia cited the New Jersey State Supreme Court case of PT and L Construction Company for the proposition that not all accessory, that not all accessory uses need to be identified in the ordinance to be permitted as a matter of right. Indeed, our Supreme Court has established a two-pronged test. Is the use incidental to the main use? And is the use found incidental to the permitted use also a customary use? Mr. Tobia described that test and applied it to this application, providing an analysis of Milburn's ordinance and citing examples of similar developments where rooftop decks are present in municipalities like Summit, Maplewood, Maristown, South Orange, Montclair. Those are not communities, it's not Jersey City. Those are suburban communities. Significantly, Mr., and significantly, Mr. Tobia's professional testimony is uncontroverted in this regard. He is the only professional who has provided professional testimony with regard to customary prong of the test. To address concerns raised by members of the public, the applicant voluntarily agreed to certain constraints of the rooftop deck, that it would close at ten PM, that the access to the decks would only be through the doorways, that the doors and the gas jets for the fire pit will be controlled by a fob and the rooftop, rooftop deck will only be used by residents and guests. We are also prepared to reduce the size by five hundred feet, which would be about an eighteen percent reduction in the size of the deck. And we could pull it back some thirteen feet from the southern part. And if the board wanted, we could put up a partition along the south side. But the rooftop deck is the right thing for this project. It is customary. And I understand that there are members of the public who have come out very strongly against the rooftop deck. But we trust that the board will want to do the right thing for the project because the people who are going to be living in this apartment building are also going to be your residents. And so it seems to me that there's a strong interest for the board to work collaboratively with us to make this project the best that it can be. This is not a college dormitory. This is a place where people are going to pay on average over five thousand dollars a month to rent. These are people who are going to be renting from your community. And we collectively should be, in our view, developing a project that is the best project it can be. There is no evidence that was presented that this is dangerous or that it was going to be a nuisance to the neighborhood. There were concerns expressed by the residents not based on anything other than what they happened to think or arguments that they made because they're trying to squash the project. That's not evidence. That's not well thought out. That's not, those aren't arguments. Those are pleas to the board and we understand where they, where they come from. But there's no evidence to support those contentions. The applicant is requesting two minor variances. That's all. You recall that Article Five, Section A, the settlement agreement envisions, quote, reasonably de minimis bulk variances or waivers from the ordinance resulting only from detailed final engineering design of the residential development. Not uncommon. Can't possibly envision every minor variance that may be triggered in a redevelopment plan or in a concept plan. They inevitably occur, which is why that language was put and placed into the settlement agreement. The first, the first, but Mr. Tobia with respect to both variances. Mr. Tobia testified that there is no substantial detriment from the variances being requested. Very important concept. No substantial detriment whatsoever. And that testimony is uncontroverted by any professional planner in this matter. The first variance relates to the step back on unit seventeen-ten. The ordinance requires a step back of ten feet wide by thirty feet in length across, whereas ten feet wide and twenty feet in length is proposed. Mr. Tobia opined that this is a C-one or hardship variance and that the hardship is created because it is impossible to provide a thirty-foot wide step back when the unit itself is only twenty feet wide. The board's planner, Mr. Phillips, recognized on the record that only twenty feet of width was possible at this particular location. Second variance relates to a temporary parking variance created by the sequencing of construction. You will recall that Mr. Tobia provided testimony with regard to the staging of the construction of this project. By lease agreement, as the board knows, the building for Summit Medical must be constructed first to ensure its continuous operations. The first stage of construction includes ten thousand square feet of medical office with two floors of residential totaling thirty-five units above. The first stage will also include one hundred and fifty-five structured parking spaces. The parking is being developed and constructed upfront with, in phase one. During construction of phase one, the applicant will have a fourteen parking space deficiency. Fifty required, thirty-six being available. Mr. Tobia represented that the applicant will implement various strategies to alleviate any parking deficiency that may, may occur during this phase. And those strategies included Uber, Lyft, Shuttle, Valet, stacked or tandem parking. None of those alternatives relied upon on-street parking. None of them. I want the record to be very clear in that regard. Once the first stage is complete, testimony was that the project will be overparked by thirty percent. It will have more parking spaces than required. So again, this parking variance is necessary due to the nature of the project and it is temporary. And the applicant has agreed to implement, implement mitigation strategies as described above and it's testified to by Mr. Tobia if same becomes necessary. There was considerable discussion regarding pedestrian safety measures that the applicant, applicant could take with regard to cars entering and exiting the garage. Not part of the applicants, not part of the plans, by the way. We, we stand by the plans. We came back and provided that testimony and provided those ideas in direct response to Mr. Steinberg's request for us to do so. Do we think we're necess, they're necessary? No. But we wanted to go the extra mile to give the board every bit of information, every option available. So yes, the applicant and the board could, could engage in dialogue that would present and, and, and end up with a custom response for the community. It is not at all uncommon for applicants and boards to engage in that kind of discussion. In fact, it is encouraged by the courts and that is what we were attempting to do. You challenged our traffic expert, Mr. Gary Dean, to that. He exhibited numerous improvements that could be implemented. We weren't proposing them. Our proposal is in our plans and we stand by our plans. But we were making available to the board additional options to address concerns that were raised by residents and members of the board. And candidly, the applicants agreed, agreed to provide any or all of them. If the board determines which improvements it desires, we can agree to same with one provision. And that is that the applicant can legally only agree to improvements in the public right of way or on municipally-owned property that are approved by the township, since my client doesn't own or control that property. Resolution can itemize, and I say this, by the way, in the context of working collaboratively together to try and get the best result. The resolution can itemize and specifically list the various pedestrian safety improvement options that the applicant is willing to provide and then delegate the decision with regard to which improvements the applicant will make to the town's professionals by way of the developer agreement. We make that proffer. We make this proffer for two reasons. First, for the reason already stated, which is the board can't require these types of improvements to be designed or made on property owned by the township. Second, the pedestrian safety plan may be viewed by the township professionals, engineering, police, et cetera, as a whole. Those made on the applicant's property and those made on the township property. And there will undoubtedly be input from township experts and departments that are not part of this board, police, emergency services, engineers and others in the municipal government. The important thing in our view is that this board has obtained the applicant's agreement to provide any or all of the improvements that were shown. We suggest the town's professionals decide which improvements should be made so that the best pedestrian safety plan can be customized for this location by the township. But again, if the board doesn't like that idea or the board is offended by Mr. Dean's testimony, we don't need to do any of it. Not required. Not required at all. We're happy to stand on our application. But we made this proffer in response to questions by the board. What we heard was disagreement, frankly, and disagreement from members of the public. Some who wanted the more urban types of, of controls out of concern for children in the area, laudable. Others who felt maybe that was a bit overkill, maybe taking on a character that was, wasn't representative of Milburg. That's okay, too. We're simply saying we're willing to do any or all of it or none of it. And we certainly welcome continued dialogue with the board in that regard. The applicant understands that execution of a developer's agreement will be a condition of approval, among other things. We understand that that agreement will detail and address issues relating to construction, staging of construction and the like. You heard testimony in that regard. Frankly, we can only take that testimony so far because our folks are going to be interfacing with your folks in the field to address those issues and that will be spelled out in the developer's agreement that will be approved by the governing body. We look forward to working with townships official, township officials in this regard. And we also understand that there are other conditions that the applicant has agreed to during the course of these proceedings, which would be set forth in the board's resolution. Once again, we want to thank the board for its time and for its engagement in this hearing. Again, I'm pleased to answer any questions that the board may have and we respectfully request that the board approve this, this application. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Inglisino. I appreciate that. We're at eleven PM. We're past my curfew. So I think what I would like to recommend, what I did here in your closing statement was a offer to potentially reduce the square footage of the roof deck by five hundred square feet. Is that my mischaracter?
That is correct.
Can I request a drawing to, to show us the proposal? And you also mentioned a a wall or some sort of a railing?
Partition along the one side and pulling it back thirteen feet.
That's correct.
On the edge. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I don't know if that was from the edge or from one end of the building. It wasn't clear, Mr. Inglisino.
It was from the, it was from the edge, Mr. Boozak. It was to provide some, you know, visual screening at that end.
Okay. If we could, can we request, I mean, you must have calculated the five hundred feet from, from some, you know, even if a rough drawing, can we request to receive that?
Sure.
Great.
Can I say something?
Yeah, Jorge.
So before to request that, shouldn't we discuss between us what should be the request? Because I don't know if we should request to reduce the square footage of the roof deck. Maybe we should request to eliminate that at all because.
Sure, I understand. I mean, our, our job is, is not to, yes, we can obviously make certain requests, but our job is not to dictate it. It's to evaluate the, what they are saying.
Requesting, yeah.
We were requesting information. I think we're going to have more discussion. What my hope is that, you know, and you're right, Jorge. I think we can maybe have that discussion and those can be questions that are asked once we maybe review it and if you, if you still feel that that is an appropriate request. um, that, that is an appropriate request, I think that that is okay to have. Um, and I would like to move to carry this to next week. Um, at next week's, already previously scheduled planning board meeting, um, Paul Phillips, our planner, can attend, um, which I, I think may also, um, help us out as we finalize our decisions here. Um, Mr. Inglisino, are you available next week? Next Wednesday?
Might better be. One, one second. I am not, but we'll, we'll have somebody for my, we'll have a lawyer present.
Okay, well, that, if we do get to the end of the, the, you know, finale, is that person going to be able to make decisions, or is it possible we'll just?
Yes, we, we will be able to converse with the board and make decisions.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you, uh, for, for making somebody available for us. Um, it's a previously, it's already on the calendar, so it's, it's not a no need for a special notice, it's just our regular planning board meeting. Um, Ed, do I make a motion, or do I just make the statement?
I think you just made the statement that the matter will be carried so forth. I'll let you, I'll let you do it, I think you got it down.
Give it a go, the matter, this application twenty zero zero seven will be carried to the May, I don't know the date, May fifth. Um, regularly scheduled planning board meeting with no requirement of any further notice, uh, or, yeah.
Seven thirty.
Via Zoom, and the, uh, link is always as posted on the agenda for the meeting. I think that's everything for tonight. Um, Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, will there be further discussion by the board? Because I, very few board members weighed in, and it's a lot of revisionist history going on, and I've taken good notes, and there was some really good and poignant points made by the public tonight that were unanswered, and the, the, um, applicant is not listening to them, and they're not difficult fixes. They're not difficult fixes. And the level of arrogance that Joe, um, you know, basically, you know, revealed in his statement, I think is echoed by many of us on the board, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little shocked. And I'm, I'm sorry that we weren't able to finish this tonight. And that's all I have.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Yes, there will be opportunity, and that was why I was asking, um, Mr. Inglisino, if that, the person who will be here is able to, um, you know.
Yes, we'll be able to respond to, to the board's questions for sure.
Thank you. Um, okay, with that, do, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Motion.
Thank you, Sanjeev. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we will conclude. We'll see you all next Wednesday evening.
All right.
Aye.